Today is April 13th, 2021. The board meeting was called to order today at 5:00 PM with the board directly going into the executive session under ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session was announced in advance on Friday, April 9th, 2021, both by listing it on the agenda and posting it online. Executive sessions are not open to the public. It's three minutes past 6:00 PM and we are now reconvening our meeting with the public session, which is the regular business meeting of our Salem Kaiser School Board. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting with most of our board members in person and two of our board members attending online, Director Leopold Pion and Director Heint, Marty Heint. Only board members and designated staff are in the boardroom and public access is online only. So I'm going to quickly go around and make sure all of us are here. And can I see, is Director Heint there as well? There she is, yeah. So since I see all board members are present, so we'll proceed with the next step. We'll start with land acknowledgement. Director Blasi, would you be kind enough to read the land acknowledgement for us, please?
Yes, thank you. Land acknowledgement. Acknowledgement is critical in building the necessary trust to coexist in harmony with one another. Indigenous tribes and bands have been apparent on the lands of the Lamont Valley across Oregon and throughout the Americas since time immemorial. In this valley, the ancestry of the Kalapuyia reaches the furthest back in time, reminding us that this plentiful place has been called home by its original inhabitants long before the names of the snowy peaks and the bountiful waters were re-identified. Today, we acknowledge that the people of this land still exist and inhabit this valley, not as heirs to it or artifacts, but as reciprocal contributors to the modern society we live in. We forward our respect to the first peoples of this land, the nine federally recognized tribes of Oregon, and those who have ceded lands here. We reflect on the displacement, removal, and genocide of indigenous people that occurred throughout Oregon and beyond. In doing so, in so doing, we truly honor the gravity of the past and endeavor to see that people may live in harmony and equity on this land for prosperity. May this acknowledgement carry resonance as a tool of peace over the land and waters we mutually rely on. Please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events.
Thank you very much, Director Blasi. Will you please stand for our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands:
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please note, there has been an updated documents for items 3A spotlights and 7B personal actions and have been posted in our website. Next, we'll turn to item 3A, spotlights on success. Superintendent Perry, will you please take over from here?
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the boardroom, both in person and virtually. And I'm just going to ask a technical question. When we do the spotlights, Bob or Alice, should we have the people who are stating the spotlight and those being spotlighted with the only ones with their cameras on? Would that give a better view of the people? Yes?
CCTV, yes.
And better for CCTV as well? Okay. So the first spotlight is Liberty House. Debbie Joa is going to be the presenter of this award. And if we could have everyone else turn their cameras off, then we'll just see Debbie Joa and our Liberty House partners. Welcome. It's great to see you tonight. All right, Debbie, would you highlight our community partner of the month?
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. Good evening, Chair Shondra Giri and board members. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, so tonight I would like to honor Salem Kaiser Public Schools' Community Partner of the Month, Liberty House. I am joined by Allison Kelly, CEO, and Kelly Perosa, Prevention Director. Liberty House is the child abuse assessment center serving Marion and Polk Counties. They offer a safe, child-friendly environment for children and their families who are facing concerns of abuse, neglect, trauma, and grief. Since opening their doors in 1999, Liberty House has continued expanding their services, and they now offer trauma-focused counseling as well as research-informed prevention services. Liberty House has helped countless students in our district who have faced abuse, trauma, and grief. This partnership is invaluable as we strive to support and help our students in every way possible. Liberty House and the Salem Kaiser School District have a longstanding partnership for which we are extremely grateful. Liberty House staff have trained, consulted, and shared resources with school employees, volunteers, students, parents, and community members on a variety of topics related to the safety and well-being of children and youth. One of the main goals of the Liberty House Prevention Team is to help adults create safe spaces for brave conversations with youth about tough topics. Recently, Liberty House launched IRespectAndProtect.com, a resource-rich website that helps children, youth, and adults recognize their self-worth and the influence of device use in their lives. I would encourage everyone to check out this website and share the information with others you know. Liberty House gathered input and advice from staff and students and continues to listen to the needs of our community as this project expands. We are grateful for our partnership with Liberty House, and we know that we will continue working with them for many years to come. The services they provide, both within the school district and the community, are invaluable. I'm so glad that we're able to honor a small portion of that work today.
We're not even sure what to do now that we're back in person, because before we'd have had to unmute and clap. So now we can just clap. So let's practice it one more time. Yay! And I know you can't see us well, but I'm hopeful you can hear us well. So thank you for coming tonight. It's great, you're great partners in our community. All right, our next spotlight, it will be presented by Principal Schoper from McKay High School, recognizing our Oregon FFA State Agricultural Sales Placement finalist. All right, good to see you.
And Superintendent Perry, good to see you as well. Mr. Hostler and your students, I hope, I hope you're on right now. I'm excited, great. I'm excited tonight to recognize the accomplishments of two of our students, Mina Drakely and Lily Ann Benson, with Salem Kaiser's Future Farmers of America program. Mina and Lily both attend McKay High School and are highly involved in agriculture studies through our FFA program. Lily received her FFA state degree this year. The state degree requires that students meet strict standards put forth by both the national and Oregon FFA associations. Students must participate in FFA programming, show agricultural expertise, and work on a project of their choosing. Lily's project was raising livestock, specifically llamas and alpacas, and teaching people in our community about them. Lily was just elected as a Capitol FFA District Leadership Position and will be representing the communities of Jervis, Woodburn, North Marion, Jefferson, Mount Angel, Silverton, Cascade, and Salem Kaiser FFA chapters. Mina recently received both a state degree and won an Agricultural Proficiency Award. Proficiency awards are given to FFA members who develop specialized skills that can be applied towards their future careers. Mina worked for a restaurant as a produce buyer for her project. She will be moving on to the national competition this fall, and we wish her the best of luck. In closing, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our own McKay agricultural science teacher and one of our FFA advisors, Gerold Hostler. Several years ago, Gerold restarted the agricultural program at McKay from the ground up. On behalf of the McKay community, we are grateful for all of his efforts that he's put in in developing and growing this highly successful program. This year marks the first time in more than 10 years that the Salem Kaiser School District has had students receive state degrees and win state FFA competitions. Mina and Lily, we are impressed by your accomplishments. Gerold, we are grateful for your dedication to our students and to this program. As Principal of McKay, I'm proud to call you Royal Scots and can't wait to see the good things the future holds. Thank you.
Thank you to our students from McKay High School and your teacher. I really have watched this program grow over the years since my time here, so thank you for being with us tonight. All right, our next spotlight is our 2021 Oregon High School Journalist of the Year, and I believe that Brian Erickson is here to present this award. Brian, it's great to see you tonight.
Thank you, it's good to see you. Good evening, Chair Shondra Giri and board members. I'm very happy to report to you this evening that one of my journalism students, Eddie Benford Ross, a senior at South Salem High School, has been named the 2021 Oregon High School Journalist of the Year by the Oregon Journalism Education Association. As if that weren't enough, this past weekend Eddie was named one of the three runners-up for the National High School Journalist of the Year Award, sponsored by the Journalism Education Association. Top high school journalists from 33 states across the nation competed for the award. In addition, she was also honored with the Nationwide Student Journalist Impact Award for her courageous reporting. Eddie submitted samples of her work, an application, an essay, a transcript, and multiple letters of recommendation. She serves as editor-in-chief of The Clipian, the South Salem Student News Organization. The Clipian is completely student-run, and student reporters work independently to write and share their stories for their readers. Her work samples include coverage of the protests over the summer in both Portland and Salem, school-related stories on a variety of topics, and examples of exceptional work with social media and photography. Eddie has done an amazing job in her four years on the Clipian news staff. She is an outstanding leader and journalist and will continue to do amazing things. As winner of the Oregon Journalist of the Year Award, Eddie received the Alice Sheets Scholarship of $1,000. As a runner-up for the National Journalist of the Year Award, she received an $850 scholarship. Congratulations, Eddie. It's been such a pleasure to be your advisor and teacher, and I'm so proud of you. Next, I'd like to hand off to South Salem Principal Laura Tiffin.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. And actually, while you're there, I'd like to thank you for your masterful guidance of our broadcast journalism program. Thank you for providing such great opportunities to our students.
Okay, try it again. There you go.
All right. Good evening, Chair Shondra Giri and Board Directors. Tonight, I am very proud to share about an exceptional academic recognition received by two of our South Salem High School seniors. In November, Eddie Benford Ross and Veronica Flores were named semifinalists in the Coca-Cola Scholarship Program. More than 99,000 high school students from across the nation applied for this prestigious award, and only 1,600 were named semifinalists. Being named a Coca-Cola semifinalist is an amazing achievement, and we are so proud of both Eddie and Veronica. The academic excellence to which they have aspired throughout their high school careers is clear from this recognition. Last month, we learned that Eddie was named one of just 150 Coca-Cola Scholars in the entire nation, and Eddie will receive a $20,000 scholarship and participate in Coca-Cola Scholars Leadership Development Institute facilitated by program alumni. Veronica plans to either attend USC or take a gap year after graduation to study in South Korea. Eddie plans to attend Georgetown University and major in international politics with a minor in journalism. Eddie and Veronica, we wish you all the best, and we are so very proud to call you Saxons. We know you both are going to have a positive impact on our world, and we wish you nothing but the best. Congratulations.
Eddie and Veronica, it's great to see you. I wish you were here with us, and I hope that you get some in-person time at South Salem before graduation. All right, our last spotlight tonight is going to be presented, I believe, by Jason Whitley, teacher and student advisor at West Salem High School. There's Jason. Hi, Jason. It's great to see you tonight. And looks like there's Alec. Alec, it's great to see you.
Good evening, Chair Shondra Giri and board members. I would like to take a few minutes tonight to honor West Salem High School senior Alec Palm. This past year, Alec served as Oregon's 75th Youth Governor for 379 days during 2020 and 2021. Alec was elected Oregon's Youth Governor through the YMCA's Youth and Government Program, which dates back to the 1930s. Youth and Gov. is a nationwide program with a goal of fostering civic engagement and leadership, as well as providing high school students with the opportunity to participate in model government. As Youth Governor, Alec was in charge of leading the annual Oregon Youth Legislative Session in February of 2020. He signed 10 bills passed by the Youth Legislature, which will be forwarded on to the Oregon Legislature and Governor Kate Brown for a possible vote. Alec was also charged with acting as an advisor to Oregon's elected officials on youth-related issues. In his tenure as Youth Governor, Alec chaired the Oregon Youth COVID-19 Action. He worked with other youth governors from across the nation to amend the CARES Act to include stimulus funding for nonprofits. After he graduates, Alec plans to attend the University of Oregon and study political science and law. West Salem High School is proud of Alec's dedication to serving the community and fostering civic engagement. We look forward to seeing all of the accomplishes. You have a great day, Alec.
Thank you. And we first met Alec, I think, in the boardroom at one point, and he is a master on social media to get our attention. Yeah, it's good to see you, Alec. It's been very fun watching you these past couple of years. And Jason, thanks for being here tonight. All right, that concludes our spotlights on success this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. That was wonderful. So the next item is the public comment, both agenda and non-agenda items. Can I request McDaniel to come to the podium, because I can't see her from here?
All right.
I'm going to request Ms. McDaniel to provide a summary of the public comments for us, please.
Yeah, and the complete record of the public comments is posted online, and we also, the summaries posted online, and then...
The board members have received.
And the board members have received them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Shondra Giri, Vice Chair Bethel, Superintendent Perry, directors, board directors. We received 21 public comments, written comments. The majority were about the spotlight awards. We have since updated that, and those are all on the website right now. And that's pretty much my report. It's pretty simple and to the point.
Awesome.
It's good to see you in person. Like, this is your first... Can I just hijack this for a second and say that this is the first meeting for you and for Ethan in person, right?
Yep, it is.
I think it's amazing that we see you as real humans.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is a, you know, I just want to say a few words. You know, I really appreciate all the community sending their comments, because as we started transitioning, we would like to make sure that we get a chance to read all the comments, and a summary will be presented. This will be the format we'll be using moving forward. It gives us a chance to read and make sure all of us have read, and so it's also posted on the website, so thank you very much. Now, we're going to, you know, the next item is reports, starting with Superintendent's report. Superintendent Perry, would you like to take over from here?
All right. So, good evening, everyone. It's great to have you back in person. Board leadership requested that I start out my reports at the beginning of the report section, and so that that could hopefully give just a little bit more time for my comments. And as, we're going to queue up a video right now, but while we're doing that, I have some quotes from today. So we had our first hybrid day for our ninth and 10th graders. So, from McNary, "One of our talented and energetic teachers had a funny moment with her students when she drank her last sip of coffee. She mockingly seemed to be in a panic that her caffeine intake was depleted. A quick-witted student stated, 'Oh, Miss James, you don't need any more coffee.'" And it's just a reminder that, you know, we just pick up where we leave off sometimes and with those relationships. A Whittaker student said, "We have a mascot named Wally?" Cool. Who knew? Sprague student entering this morning to our music and cheerleading said, "High school is so much better than being at home." Is it like this every day? Yeah. From Judson, "I'm here with living people, and I can see people's whole bodies." Yeah. "North Salem, it's so nice to hear voices." This is from a teacher. "Our school has life again. It feels like a school. And at the end of the day at North, we have students. It's like, wow, these students are here." Judson, "When I told my students it was okay to move, they were like wind-up toys. They just couldn't even know what to do. And at South, it's so much better to be at real school." So, there you have it, from the words of our students and teachers as we got back to in-person learning. With that, this is a video that was created by North Salem High School, and I thought it was appropriate as we think about, where do we go from here? So I thought it would be great to see it today. It has been shared statewide. I watched it with about 200 superintendents online today. It was promoted by Oregon Department of Education. It's been shown in the governor's office. So, not sure whose idea it was, but really well done and really an important message as we think about what our kids have gained during this pandemic. So with that, if we could get the video started.
...today declared that the coronavirus presents a public health emergency in the United States.
expressed by so many about the deficits the kids will demonstrate when they finally return to school.
It's concerning.
It's concerning.
It's concerning.
It's concerning that this is what concerns some in the face of a pandemic affecting millions around our country and world.
It speaks to one of my biggest fears.
It speaks to one of my biggest fears.
For the children when they return.
In our determination to catch them up, I fear that we will lose who they are and what they have learned during this unprecedented time.
What on earth are we trying to catch them up on?
The scope and sequence no longer apply.
The old assessments are no longer valid.
The plans have been interrupted.
We shouldn't forget that the scope and sequence, standards, and assessments were established by people, not ordained by God.
They simply do not apply.
They simply do not apply.
They simply do not apply.
When we return to school, we will return with new history.
When we return to school, we will have returned with a new history.
And we will need to help them make sense of it.
When we return to school, we need you to listen to us.
Let our stories be told.
We have endured.
We've endured.
We have endured a year that has no parallel in our times.
There's no assessment that applies to who we are or what we have learned.
Our brains did not go into hibernation during this year. They may not have been focused on traditional school material, but they didn't stop either.
Our brains have been focused on where our next meal is coming from, or how to care for our younger siblings, or how to deal with the loss of a loved one.
We need you.
We need you.
They need us.
They need us to welcome us back and help us write that history.
We need to surrender the artificial constructs and traditional notions of school as we knew it and greet students where they are, not where we think they should be.
Greet them with art supplies and writing materials.
And theater and dance and so many other opportunities to help them express what has happened in their lives during this horrific year.
Create us with stories and books that will help us make sense of an upside-down world.
We missed you.
They did not miss the test prep.
We didn't miss the work, kids.
They didn't miss the homework.
We missed you.
Resist the pressure from whatever powers that be who are in a hurry to fix kids and make up for lost time. The time, it was not lost. It was invested in surviving an historic event in their lives, in our lives.
The children do not need to be fixed.
Nuestros hijos no necesitan reparación.
The children do not need to be fixed.
Nada nos ha destruido.
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 We are not broken.
They need to be heard.
Ellos necesitan ser escuchados.
They need to be heard.
Necesitamos escucharlos.
They need to be heard.
We need to be heard.
They need to be given as many tools as we can provide to nurture resilience and help them prepare and adjust for a post-pandemic world.
Being a teacher is an essential connection between what is and what can be.
Our kids have so much to share about the world they live in, and we can help them make sense of what, for all of us, has been unimaginable.
Has been unimaginable.
Unimaginable.
This will help them.
And us.
Achieve a lot more that can be measured by any assessment ever devised.
We have a tradition of coming together in times of need because our community is resilient, united as a Viking family in the excellence of not only our academics, but in our commitment to one another.
This is the true North.
This is the true North.
This is the true North.
Yeah, just not sure when they created that, but I think it was released maybe even two or three weeks ago. So I thought it was important to be sure that you saw it. And Ethan, could you bump the slides? I just have three other quick slides. I wanted to highlight, I know we talk a lot about how do we get more voices into the room, more input into decisions, and so I just wanted to highlight one of our student investment account strategies, because we always present these to you in bulk, it seems like, all of them at once, and I thought... like, all of them at once, and I thought it might be great to present them in a way that now and then, so you could kind of see these. So our theory of action around engagement is if we better engage community members, community partners, families, and students with ongoing two-way communication and authentic relationships, we will gain input and insight into our students' diverse cultures and will become more culturally competent. Then we will create more student-centered systems and students with experience will experience a higher sense of belonging. So that's written into our SIA plan. Next slide, these are the outcomes that we measure in that plan. Improved sense of belonging by disaggregated data for specific student groups. You've seen some of that in the boardroom with Panorama already. And then improved parent perception of school is measured by Panorama is the other thing we measure with that as one of the data outcomes. And then finally, I just thought I would show you, which is in your packet, so it's a little distance there, but the members of the Student Advisory Committee or Student Investment Account Advisory Committee for this school year, and you have a board liaison on that committee with Director Bethel. They're in preparation right now for planning for our plan for 2122, and I think they've about even maybe gotten it almost finalized at their meeting Monday night.
Really close.
Really close.
Yeah. One more meeting in May.
Awesome. And it's been a really engaging process for the advisory committee members. I'm not sure if you had any comments on that, but Sandy Price, who leads that committee, has done a really good job of working to create community with the advisory group so then they could move forward and give some input on the work. So any other comments on that, Craig, or?
I would just add that they spend hours on Monday nights as a community. There's really a sense of participation. They're really comfortable having the really tough conversations and kind of talking to each other about particular things. The fact that it's on Teams makes it really easy for me to just listen in, and I can't tell you, like, I think one night we were, well, I feel like I listened for five hours. They were just, they just are really invested in these really deep conversations, and it's really overwhelming, to be honest, to sit and listen to, I think, just what they're trying to, trying to accomplish and really together. I think your statement is sense of community might be accurate. I wish we could do it together in person, but they are really doing a lot of really hard work, and they're very engaged.
Yeah. And in an online community, that's hard.
Oh, my gosh. It's just like so many hours on a Monday. I have the staff, you come to work Tuesday morning early.
Those are long nights, but just for the board to know and for the community listening to know, the Advisory Council has tried to stay true to what we heard in the communities all, not this year, but last year, about what's important and what are their priorities, and then trying to adjust during the pandemic. Well, that was before the pandemic. How can we do this now? So, and just to echo what Director Bethel is saying, they've committed to this process wholeheartedly. As you know, it's not without conflict at times because there's so many different needs and so many different perceptions, and they've hung in there through that. So Sandy Price has led that group really well, but it's really a testament to the people who show up day in, day out. And it's, and we went from, we'll talk about this in the weeks to come, but we went from a smaller pot of money, about $10 million, now we're about $28 million. The original amount was 36, and so we're still not quite fully funded, but we are close to actualizing all the things we presented to you last year, honestly, about this time. So that's why it's exciting to be moving forward.
I'm getting a reminder that if you're talking, you should use the mic.
Oh.
Yeah. You're good now.
Sorry.
Yeah. That's okay.
Okay.
And the other thing is a reminder that we added to, through this strategy, we added to our cultural resource specialist, McKinney Vento, increased translation services, our community resource specialist out of Cynthia's office, some CSOCs, and then we also have a strategic community outreach coordinator out of Sylvia Shop as well to really help do the engagement piece. And in the future, I'd love to share some of the work that she's really accomplishing out of that office, but right now she's coordinated all the Q and A sessions we've been doing with families about returned in-person learning. So we've done a Chukies, a Marshallese, a Russian, Native American, just multiple, and she's helped really pull groups together and get us leads in multiple communities, which has been really helpful. So she's been a huge addition, Jaclyn, out of Sylvia's office. So with that, that ends my superintendent report, and I think we'll move on to the next report, which I think starts Dr. Nudosnatah. And is, Craig, are you going to join? Are you guys, how are you guys going to?
I think it's.
It's mostly him.
Yeah, I'm going to do the whole.
Okay.
Just to avoid the.
Perfect.
Cross traffic.
Welcome to the podium for the first time.
Thank you.
Should we give him a round of applause? I'm just saying. I like the fact that there's not a you-vo thing behind you.
Yeah. Dr. Ethan Nudosnatah, first time in person behind the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Shondra Garian, Vice Chair Bethel, and Superintendent Perry. Tonight, what I'm going to do is give you an update on our reimagining school discipline and safety and well-being processes. If you recall, and by the way, I just wanted to mention, it's really nice to be here in person after spending about 30 board meetings on Teams. So, all right, and Craig. So just a reminder that this process is an update on how far we've come. If you recall, we unveiled these processes related to school discipline and, or reimagining school discipline in the Safety and Wellbeing Summit, and a lot has changed since we've done that. And while there's been a lot of shifting in terms of these reports, what we want to stress is that our commitment to student safety has not wavered, it has not changed, it continues to be our priority. And so what I'd like to do over the next few slides is just speak to you about how we are underscoring our safety systems and then also speak with you about how our reimagining school discipline processes are informing the work that we're doing internally with our staff, especially as it pertains to our professional development, and then also our ongoing mission to make sure that we are, we are developing systems to deconstruct racist systems and structures and also developing systems that are more inclusive and equitable. Okay, so let me go ahead and share with you where we've been so far. So if you remember, we had two discrete processes, and right now these processes have merged a little bit. And so with our student safety and with our student safety systems, what was once going to be a summit has really turned into a process of engagement with key stakeholders to review our safety systems, and we're continuing to work with the New York University team, and we're continuing to have conversations with law enforcement. And this is a process that's led by safety and risk and their district leadership, but we're meeting with law enforcement, we're meeting with our building leaders to discuss what needs we, what needs and safety needs we need to put into place to make sure that our students are safe. And then with the reimagining school discipline side, we're continuing to work with workgroups, and that's an internal process, but we are working with some consultants, and we're developing professional learning and, we're utilizing professional learning and coaching. And this is taking place in a lot of the PD time that we have with our staff. And an example of the professional learning that's going on is, has to do with our restorative practices through International Institutes, the International Institute of Restorative Practices, our bias training with Dr. Marks that you all are familiar with, and our culturally responsive school leadership teams. And so what I want to do is on the next slide, just draw your attention to some systems and structures that we're using to make, to ensure that we're incorporating, that we're incorporating what we're learning with our ongoing PD that's already taking place, especially with regards to our MTSS structures, which is our multiple-tiered systems of support. So you have a handout in your packet, which makes that really small, that really small font easier to read. It's still maybe a little bit tricky to read. We try to blow it up for you, but I'll go ahead and outline what's most important for you to understand in this. This is a system that we're using with all of our building leaders and staff, and when it says "all students," that's tier one. Those are the initiatives we're taking that will impact all students. What's most important, or one of the most important things that I think our students need from tier one is our social-emotional learning. So you'll see that as a second bullet. And then you scale down to some students. These are supports that some of our students need, but not all, right? And an example of that might be our restorative practices, especially when it comes to our approach to school discipline. And then finally, our tier three are intensive supports. These are supports that a few of our students need, but when they need them, they really need them. And those are like when we need our social workers to do house visits. They also take the form of when we have a student that's in crisis and we have a suicide intervention service that we provide to families. And so these are examples of how we're creating safer schools and also a more nurturing and welcome environment for all students. One other thing that we're doing is we're also trying to shift the way that we're approaching our approach to school discipline. So whereas we used to have a punitive structure, or we traditionally had a punitive structure, if a student engages in unfruitful behavior, they often would be excluded from school, whether that's a suspension, expulsion, et cetera. What we're trying to do is shift our focus in terms of school discipline, right? So whether that's, whether that's looking at the language, right? So we say there's an incident instead of an offense, or focus on learning instead of giving a consequence. So reteaching and coaching is something that's really important in the structure. Also, having, finding ways that we can include students in the learning rather than exclude students in our learning, and then also develop, really focusing on developing relationships with students. And so all of this is because we really want to improve equity in school, right? And so I'm going to shift from the reimagining school discipline to our safety systems. Okay? And so there's a lot of detail here, and remember, you have the notes in front of you, so feel free to reference these notes as I talk. I'm just going to give you an overview of all the work that we're continuing to do to make sure that we're keeping our students safe. So first, our district, what we've been doing over the last couple of months is really vetting our services that are necessary to keep students safe. For instance, early on, was it this week or last week? I think it was last week.
I don't know.
Was it last week? It seems like it was this week. We brought in our building, our secondary building leaders, our principals, our behavior assistant principals, and our middle school assistant principals, and we really asked them for their input and feedback on what they need to keep students safe. And we learned a lot from that process, and what we did is we will take the information that we receive from them and incorporate those in our ongoing conversations with law enforcement so that we could, we can ensure that when we do develop our future relationship and agreements with law enforcement, it will be, we'll have the information we need and we'll have the details that we need to keep students safe. And so here are some things that came from that meeting, and also things that Safety, Risk and Management Services have discussed when we look at how we're going to finalize the details of what our future relationship with law enforcement and schools will look like. We know that we need to address any type of criminal offense that might happen in school. That can be with guns, or not guns, that could be with fight, and I don't mean to laugh at that, I just looked at the worst-case scenario, but sometimes the worst-case scenario happens. So fighting, drugs, weapons are oftentimes the criminal offenses that we might see in schools and which we'll need a law enforcement present available. We'll also need a liaison, somebody who has a single point of contact. And then we also need ongoing professional development. For instance, how will we, we need training on lockdowns, right? Or training on how to intervene with an escalating situation with a student. So those are, those are services that we're going to need continued support in moving forward. All right. And then here's examples of other preventative systems that we, that we'll continue to need to have in place as we work with students. And these are some of the things that the general public doesn't often see, but we feel like we really need these things to keep our students safe. So suicide risk assessment, behavior threat assessment, fire misuse program, et cetera. So moving forward, here's what our timeline will look like. You see that on the first, the first bullet, that's something that we've already done, which is had brainstorming sessions with building leaders to see what we need to keep students safe, ongoing conversations with law enforcement. Those have been continuous. We've been having those frequently for the last year or so. And then, of course, we're going to continue to work with NYU as they help us to do some sense-making and be a thought partner in this process. And then again, we're going to continue to plan. And I just really want to emphasize that our goal here is to keep students safe. Any questions?
Can I add, just add a couple things?
Sure.
Yeah, so I think the way to think about this is this is going to be ongoing and continue to refine. So like this week, Allison Kelly is going to lead a conversation around child abuse and prevention of child abuse and child abuse investigations through the MDT process. And then with NYU, they're planning now to come out to Oregon in May, and we're thinking in terms of maybe a series of town halls where we really have a lot of the information about our preventative systems. The preventative systems, you saw that Ethan highlighted, our behavioral threat assessment, suicide risk assessment, fire starting, and sexual incident response system are all systems we've had and continue to have, and we're known for our systems. So, but we don't often talk enough about them to our public, and so that's part of what we want to keep doing through, you know, every week we're doing another conversation to go deeper. With our leaders, we really said, okay, what should the, what should the footprint of when you call law enforcement be? And we found some gaps in the system, not for law enforcement, but ways that we can have other people do some of the law enforcement work. So if you look at the final bullet there, school counselors, social workers, behavioral health services, we're going to do some shifting of social workers and things because we're having our law enforcement partners do things that could be done by social workers with home visits and things. And I'll share some of that as we lead into the budget process around that. And we really are looking at high school counseling caseloads and all of that. So it's, what we, our plan with you is every time we meet with you, we will keep you updated. We're going to keep going along this process. We're really trying to figure out exactly, and this is where we're trying to get some technical assistance, where's, where's input on reimagining school discipline? We know we want to have a restorative system. We know we want to have less exclusionary practices. We know we want to close the gap, you know, reduce expulsions and suspensions, especially from, in groups of students that have greater suspension and expulsion rates. And where's the input around that? Is it around what does insubordination mean in different cultures? Is it around what are your expectations about when, how kids behave at school? So that's the part we're really trying to figure out in this with that and with our safety system. So with that, I think there's some questions.
Let's kind of go around and make sure, we'll start with Director Kylo as he raises his hand.
My question is, I'll throw this, it looks good to me, but there's one piece that seems to be missing.
Yeah, there you go.
Do I need to test this as well?
I think so.
Oh, yours is a touch one. Sorry, mine isn't.
Of course, it's on the end. It all looks good to me. I'll say that again because I think that's worth hearing. My concern is at what point will the investigation or the hearings officers be included in this because they seem to be missing in my mind, which is where a lot, when you talk about, as the superintendent just did, expulsions and things, that falls in those investigate, in those hearings officers, and if they don't understand what's going on and what's happening, we don't want the number of students increasing to go to them, but we also want them to be tuned into the system as to what happens. And that's something Mr. DiCapulis and I have been discussing for about seven and a half years, and so it's nice, it would be nice to see it included.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Director Kylo. And we, we aren't done with our engagement process, so this is, this is a group that will consider engaging with in the future.
It's probably one of our points, too, of. It's probably one of our points too of, of what, when a student gets to expulsion, how do we figure out, is there, is there a step before? Or is it a transfer? We talked about that as well. We also have some alt ed work we're, um, engaging in that I'll bring forward some comments in the budget process, um, both at the high school level and the middle school level with the creation of alt ed, um, program at the middle level that I'll share in the budget process as well.
Alright. And this one thing that I did want to add that I didn't share is that there's a lot that we, we're learning throughout this process. And one of the reasons for the shift is that we're finding that there's a lot of interconnectivity when it comes to, um, our school discipline processes and also when it comes to student safety. And so that's why there's been some shifts in the way that we've been structuring this, these processes. And, um, so to that end, I think that we're, there's going to continue to be shifts, but we think what it'll do is really help to streamline the processes and it's going to help inform our learning. And then when we have, um, some, some finished products as it pertains to, um, reviewing our, our discipline policy or, um, setting up our, our data systems so that they can really help to inform, um, have to inform what's happening with student safeties. We think that, uh, that continually, um, take, taking input in and shifting will really help those processes altogether.
Thank you very much. That's nice. Just going to go around and make sure everybody, I'll start with Advisor Ma Binton. Do you have any questions? You had to press that little button.
Um, my only question, um, which I'm sure you guys do, is there like a student, um, group when you guys meet about?
Yes, there's a, there's a student component that was, um, that was put into place through our reimagining school discipline process. And that was, uh, put into place by, uh, Director Cynthia Richardson.
Okay, that's, that's my only question. Everything looks good.
We're thinking about is next is school leaders. As they talk about safety and think about systems and they shift their thinking. We're thinking about taking school leaders and then having school leaders interact with youth around it. Instead of school leaders or student leaders just acting, um, interacting with the district. So that's kind of what we see as that next step. These, these great leadership conversations about discipline, safety, all of that with leaders first and then to engage youth in that conversation. And if we don't get some of that done before, we're thinking when NYU comes, that that might be some really great, uh, conversation when they get here in May, so.
Let's kind of ask, uh, Director Hyun, do you have any question?
I knew as soon as I, uh,
I knew as soon as I took a bite of my burrito you'd ask me. Uh, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Well, I feel like I have a million questions, so I think it might be, well, okay, if I could finish. Uh, I, I, and so I'd like to set up a meeting, uh, maybe, uh, with Ethan Yuwana or someone else, uh, just so I can ask him. Uh, it, it's going to take a minute just because I, I want to truly understand a lot of the dynamics and a lot of the data that we're seeing.
That's a good question. Director Goss, do you have any?
No, I don't.
Director Blasi.
So just a couple of quick comments, and then I do have one question, but really quick. First, starting with the shifting our focus, I, I think that this is, uh, phenomenal. Because I can actually envision how this would look different, um, just based on these words. And I know that these aren't just words. These are what we expect to see this look like in the future. So instead of talking about, you know, consequences, it's maybe an opportunity to learn. And, um, you know, instead of talking about exclusion, talking about inclusion. So I, I think that this is really, really great, you know, not just words, but what it, what it should look like. The question I have is with regards to the layout of our buildings. And I know that a lot of effort went in, uh, thanks to Mike and his team and lots and lots of people across the district. When, um, when the designs for the new buildings and the remodeling was done. But with regards to how people coming in from the outside, um, can't necessarily access or, uh, you know, we have, we have people in the building who put eyes on people coming into the building. If they manage to, you know, slide in with a group of students or, um, I was just kind of hoping for a little bit more information about where we are on that and kind of in perspective for, um, you know, the number of our buildings, you know, kind of percentage wise, just a guess. Not even, not, not specifics, but, um, where are we on a number of buildings that have been kind of reimagined or, um, the layout has been done differently?
So I'm going to let, um, Mike answer that one for you.
My answer will be brief. I don't know. But I can get you that information. I could, I could tell you that all of the bond projects have this, have a safety component in them. But I can certainly give you an update, um, and we'll send it out via email to everybody.
Either that or we can add it to some of our updates at the work session as well. Just the general ideas around the vest, the secure vestibules, how we're implementing those, a couple of pictures even, I think. It's really changed how you get in and out of schools, um, in the construction.
Well, and I, I think you'll be at a tour.
Yeah.
So you can actually see it at South in McKay.
Vice Chair Bethel, do you have any?
I do. So many. So I'll be following up. But, uh, the one that, I, I just have a concern. This concern was brought to me by one of our principals recently. And I like that you put it on here with ongoing professional development and training, which feels very creative to me. But I just, um, the concern is this, teachers go to school to earn an academic degree, to be teachers, not to be security guards or bodyguards or, or police officers. And there's, there's a concern that through the ongoing professional development training, there's an expectation unduly put on our educational professionals to engage in circumstances that could potentially put them in harm's way. Um, especially at the high school level when, if you look at our high schools and if you look at Marion County, every one of our high schools is bigger than 50% of the small cities that we have in just our county alone with a couple of thousand students. And I'd real, I really hope that there's not an expectation that's going to be overimposed on our educators. And I'd, I'd like to know what that looks like. Um, in the world of safety, you talk about, um, in-school criminal crisis, including imminent threats. And, you know, what does that look like in your mind now? And if you don't have a plan, fine, but I, I'm concerned and I'm, I'm concerned that this principal is concerned.
Would you mind if I shared a couple of examples for you?
All the examples.
From my experience, um, being in high schools and also working with our safety risk management. And so, um, the type of strategies that we would, um, that we would provide training on is strategies around deescalate, uh, de-escalation. Um, strategies for, um, who to call or coaching on how, who to call and what resources to use if you see an unsafe situation. Not necessarily, um, providing training for staff on how to insert themselves into an unsafe situation. That's not the intent. And so an imminent threat too could be something like, uh, seeing a Facebook or another Facebook, an Instagram, um, post where a student is threatening to harm somebody at school or threatening, or targeting a specific school. Um, and giving our staff the tools for how to, how to report those if they, if they heard about them. Um, sometimes we take for granted or we make assumptions that our staff know exactly what to do with those types of threats that they hear about. And so that's the type of training that we would be doing. Also, um, lockdown trainings, um, are, are trainings that would, are, that we've done in the past that we'll continue to do. So that's what we mean about, um, overall school safety and, and ongoing, uh, training. Also, what do you do if a student is seeming depressed or suicidal or showing suicidal ideation? Um, we would provide, um, staff training with that as well.
And, um, I just want to clarify a little bit. When you say educator, we're hearing, um, I think we're responding with, um, the examples of like that, some of that might not be out to a classroom teacher. So if you're saying educator, classroom teacher, that training for them is different than training for a behavior specialist, campus security, um, social worker, counselor. You know, there's different layers of training. For a classroom teacher, we would want, um, we have a lot of classroom teachers already that are trained in de-escalation or MANT training. We'd want them to know who to call when. Um, but, and some of the things on that list are absolutely law enforcement functions. So criminal investigation, big, um, felony on campus or some, a student in the community, that's not us, that's law enforcement. And why that continued relationship with law enforcement is, um, important. So that's when you say educator, I just wanted, I thought in your mind you were thinking classroom teacher.
I am.
Director Kylo is getting ready to ask a question. I assume I'm right.
I already used my one question.
You did.
My concern is to follow up with what Director Bethel said, is the elementary teacher who has to break up a fight. Um, that's not criminal necessarily. It could be. Are we going to be teaching the staff how to break up a fight? And are we going to then support that teacher after they break up the fight and the parent says, you hurt my kid? So are we going to increase the HR budget to hire all the new investigators we're going to need?
So I'm just going to answer, our elementary teachers already break up fights. Cause there isn't, uh, and our behavior specialists do and our principals do. Generally at the elementary level, they're not that, um, which is why we also want them trained in the MANT training. Because that's a way to, um, you know, we do have to teach kids at time. We have to pull away from things. And, and that training, um, is how to do that safely. Uh, Dr. Sprouls, anything you want to add there?
No, just in support that, that's the common training that we already have at the elementary school level. How to intervene and, and do that well and do that safely. Keeping the children's safety, um, who may be escalating at the time, um, at the forefront of those trainings, that's always the, the key for that.
And that's not new. That's been ongoing. As we had that more disruptive behavior, that's been part of our response to some of the disruptive behavior.
And we might disagree.
Okay, yeah. Oh, I don't thi, I didn't say we're perfect at it.
I think I hear no other comments. I'm just going to ask a question. Doctor Udo Sanata, your slide says outcome nurtured, safe and welcoming. When I go through that long list, it sounds like a process rather than an outcome to me. It is a process in which we are taking an intention of reaching the safe outcome. There's a lot of steps in between and intention is not the same as outcome. It's just like, this is our wish that every place will be totally safe. So there's a lot of process and we've got 5,000 employees, if I remember right, in the last budget, roughly 5,000. So by the time we roll it out and everybody is trained, I'm just going to imagine if I'm a parent and I'm going to fly tomorrow. So I know what to pack, what to go, what TSA will be expecting to, for me to carry. It's very simple. And then I don't take anything what I'm not supposed to, like pack a gun or drugs or an animal in my suitcase or whatever it is. So if I were to explain this to a parent saying, this make it very simple, or a new teacher who's joining, it'll make it very simple. So how will I know how much has been implemented? For example, if you take QPR or all the 5,000 employees already QPR trained and proficient, or it'll take a few years for us to roll it out. Like MANT training, it takes time. And then it had to be recertified every year. Because to me, that's just a pro, you described it's a good process of how we will roll it out. And is there a baseline audit done of what is currently going on in 65 school buildings?
Chair Shonda Geary, um, that's a really good question. And, and, um, we've looked at, uh, we've discussed what the measurable outcome should be in terms of reduction and suspension expulsion. Um, but we, we haven't, we haven't, um, arrived at a concrete number, so we didn't put it in the report. But we do want a reduction in disproportionate discipline. And we do want, um, we have qualitative metrics too that, that we use our panoramic, uh, our panorama, uh, uh, report and survey for. So that sense of wellbeing.
So you've got some way to measure the outcome eventually?
Yeah, yeah. So we have sys, we have ways to, to demonstrate the outcomes that will be in place.
So may I ask just a simple follow-up? So until that outcome is reached, how long do you think all this will take to roll out and get everybody so proficient that those outcome will keep our children safe?
So can I, I'm going to just answer if that's okay. I, I think one of the confusions is also, and I think we should just do, figure out how to, um, share, here's where we are on things. Cause there's a piece of this we're sharing with you that we might not be fully implemented, but it's not new. So I don't want us to think that the, as we're shifting the culture, we're, that's how we want to shift away from, um, punitive to inclusionary and that restorative work and that building relationship ahead of time is what we're trying to get to. So we're not, we're not there, but we're not also starting from zero. Just like our, um, preventative safety systems, those are all in place before. Just like MANT training, um, it's always recertified. Oh, you know, there's, there's ongoing. So I think that we should think about how do we, um, you, you've worked with Dr. Sprouls on some data. And I think you should decide as a board then, is that the right data set you're looking at? And so maybe that's a place we should move because the data, um, that we're talking about is what you were hopeful to measure as far as safety systems as well.
So my question is not about the data which will measure the ultimate outcome. The question is how are we going to measure the implementation of this complex system problem? And how long will it take to scale it up enough that all 5,000 employees will be proficient in step one, step two, step three, whatever that is called?
So I think Dr. Sprouls is going to answer that.
Yeah, I'm dying to answer this one.
I know, it's fine. You can't, you can't see him.
Still little hiding behind him.
There you go.
So the process measurements that you're referring to, Dr. Shonda Geary, we actually have those for almost every single thing that's on the list that says all, some and few. So for instance, the behavioral intervention supports at every school, we monitor that every year and we monitor implementation. And we have a percentage on that that's given. For our social emotional learning curriculum and programming, the same, we now have it in every single classroom and it's documented. We'll be coming with you to share a celebration that we have mental health services now provided in every single one of our schools, working with Marion Polk, Stronger Oregon and Trillium. So I could go down this list, our QPR training, we know exactly the percentage of, of people for our ITCC classrooms. Um, we, we, um, we actually do have data. These are well-established systems by and large. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't improve them. So that doesn't mean that, that we've arrived with any of these systems, but none of these are, um, just, we just have our toe in the water. These are, these are things that we are working together to fully implement.
Do we have like some kind of annual audit in all the 65 school buildings? Just like when you talked about COVID, each school building has a plan that any parent can go and check and this is the plan for COVID audit. Is there a similar audit for all this complex system that parents can go and say, in my school, if I bring my child here, these are all available, all these are proficiently trained staff or 50% is trained. I, I can expect who to call, who not to call?
There's not an audit, um, per se, that shows the percentage of each thing. But do you remember the resource guide I shared at the last board meeting that shows at your school, these are the social workers contacts, these are the counseling contacts, these are. So we do have a resource guide for a parent to be able to say if my, my student is a Sumter stingray, what, what, what are the resources at Sumter that I can, that I can guarantee for my student? So we do have that. Um, that's on our website that I referred to last time that we're trying to get out into the hands of parents.
Dr. Shonda Geary, Director Hyun has a question.
Go ahead, Director Hyun.
Thank you. I'll lower my hand now. Uh, sorry, I thought of something. Um, when Superintendent Perry, uh, I think, uh, she said uh, that law enforcement would be brought in or something, uh, with a big felony. And I'm just wondering what happens with a little felony? Because isn't a felony a felony? And how do we define what felonies we ignore? Or how do we handle felonies that aren't considered big by the district because they're still a felony?
Part of that, um, ongoing, uh, conversation with law enforcement around when is the time to call? Cause some, um, things are urgent and emergencies, others are report to non-emergency. And so, um, if there's, you know, crime committed on campus, uh, we'll, we'll assess that and we'll have the ability to consult with law enforcement around what's the right time to bring them onto campus. Um, because there will be, they are, these are big cities. And, uh, they, there will be times that we'll need law enforcement either to keep somebody out or to do something on campus. What we're really working to do though is to foot the, uh, to reduce the footprint of when and provide other resources. So one of our schools described, um, some wellness checks for suicide risk assessments. Well, not every suicide risk assessment, um, wellness check needs a law enforcement official. So it's, you put some social workers into that. So it'll be on a, um, continuum, but the So it'll be on a continuum, but the goal is that students aren't arrested in the juvenile justice system. We have to keep putting that out there as our goal in order to be, have kids that graduate on time, prepared for a successful life. At the same time, keeping kids safe.
So we arrest students who are threatening suicide? I didn't think we did that.
No, no, no. That was, sorry, that was a, that's a time when we in the past have used law enforcement.
For like a well check, a well child check. Is this student okay?
So you might send law enforcement. Well, not every suicide risk assessment needs a cop to do it, a social worker.
No, I was talking about felonies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because you said only big felonies would involve law enforcement and that was my question. What happens if it's not your definition of a big felony, but it's a felony? That was my question.
I have a question about how are children going to learn to trust law enforcement right from the time they're little and realize positive relationship with law enforcement based on their developmental stage throughout? We've got 42,000 children now, but tomorrow they'll be adults and they'll have their families. So how do we teach that component of positive relationship with law enforcement? It's nothing but part of our, you know, community and together we take what's called the community, taking ownership of safety and, you know, what the community policing standards of 21st century law enforcement transmission. Where does that fit in? Because in CTEC, you're actually offering a program where lots of students from diverse backgrounds want to be in the law enforcement. So on one hand, they are all, it's a very popular program, I'm told. So how do we teach rest of the community how to have positive relationship?
I think if that's an interest of the board, I think that's a great community conversation and that should be something the community discusses. As we think about how do we educate kids, how do we keep kids safe? How do we assure kids are in spaces where they can grow and thrive and learn? And if a community conversation says, well, that's on the schools. I mean, it's about which, which part of everything about kids do we take and which do we not? And I think right now, we would say, we're not, we don't want to be, you know, disengaged with them. But right now, we want our own employees to love and care on our kids, as Dr. Sprouls would say. Build relationships, have preventative systems. And if we want to as a community really build this, then what does that mean? And we should come together as a community and talk about it, not just as a school system.
I'm not entirely clear what you mean by that. Because one of the questions that has come up is many in our community are afraid of the law enforcement, right? The whole law enforcement itself causes trauma and it's like a trauma trigger. So here, how are we going to help them heal from that and overcome the fear, that trauma? It's like, you know, the sound of helicopter in Salem Airport will cause a flashback in a veteran. So how do you help them overcome that fear of law enforcement? And look not to get scared and avoid law enforcement, but to say how to be assertive and develop the necessary agency and not to fear, but to understand that these students have a right. They have the agency and not to be afraid of law enforcement.
Chair Shonda Gary, this is, that's normally an important conversation piece that happens within the police departments. And so we're in close communications with Chief Womack and Chief Teagan will continue to be. And I know in a lot of communities, including Salem Kaiser, there's often programs that are intended from the police department to engage the community, whether it's a touch a truck or touch a, touch a car to have a positive interaction or whether it's having law enforcement come and be guest speakers or doing a police athletic league, which is a very popular program intended to get kids into a structured environment after school to do things like play basketball, box, et cetera. So those are, those are things that I'm sure our, our police chiefs are, have thought about and we'll ask them about that when we have conversations with them next.
So are you saying that before we had some programs within the school system that we won't be having anymore?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that the questions that you're asking are normally fielded by the, are questions that are deeply contemplated by our, our police departments and not necessarily our, our school districts. But we'll, but when we meet with them, we'll, we'll bring this, we'll bring this to their attention and ask them ways that we can continue to develop a positive interaction.
They used to a while back have like DARE, but that's been cut from their budget, so that's not on us. And I think that was likely the goal of a national SRO model, but we weren't a national SRO model.
Vice Chair Bethel, you have a question? I saw your hand raised.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to state that the district has the opportunity to partner with law enforcement, like with Blast Camp, which is what I think Dr. Udo Senata is trying to describe, which is a program in Kaiser where law enforcement and fire support and military come together. At Whittaker, last, not last year, but the years prior to COVID, it was at Whittaker in Claggett and hundreds of kids came and spent a couple of days interfacing. I understand what you're asking. I think this is a more involved conversation and I totally support having it with the community. And I think that we, we as a school board should engage that. That's a part of our opportunity to have those conversations. We have spent 20 minutes on this particular report and no offense, but I don't want to be in this space at 10 o'clock tonight. So if we could wrap it back into the agenda and move ahead, there's opportunities. We will follow up with Dr. Udo Senata on several of these topics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bethel. Can we go to the next?
Oh, yeah. There you go.
You are a veteran, so you don't get.
You're so much taller. You're so much taller now. Did you grow during COVID?
No, I do think I grew, but not taller.
I did not say that. Just so we're clear. He said that. I did not.
There was some growing done. So Chairperson Shonda Gary and Vice Chair Bethel and Superintendent Perry, the next report is on monitoring data systems. And if you will check your board packet, we actually submitted a board plate, which we normally don't do for reports. But there is a piece of this for board discussion and consensus around what data you would like for us to provide in the future to be able to provide the board what it needs around monitoring data on safety and security and the well-being of our students. So if you can have that in the back of your mind as the discussion we would like to have following my presentation. So the, let's see.
We're learning a new clicker system too.
Okay. So there's two different components in this data report. And again, this report was generated out of a response from a, from board leadership around establishing both a baseline to be able to look back and say, where have we been related to safety, security and well-being of our students? And then how can we monitor that moving forward? So the first report that you'll see, and we're hoping to just kind of get in the system of just submitting reports, not having to go over each component of that, giving you an opportunity to see the data and dissect it. So the first report is entitled SKPS Historical Sense of Belonging and Discipline Data. And this breaks out, most of this data you've already seen in the panorama report and in the reimagining school discipline report. But you'll see it, it includes a report on the sense of belonging. You'll see it, it includes a report on attendance rates broken out from different levels on what our attendance looks like. You'll see, you'll see a summary of our major discipline incidents. And I would just call your attention to the major discipline incidents graph. It looks like this. Because this is something we'll monitor moving forward. And so this may be something for you to familiarize yourself on. And these are the incidents as they are recorded in synergy in our system. So this is how we code different incidents, behavioral incidents, and then we produce reports based on that. And we monitor these both at the school level and the district level. And I've been, it would be a suggestion that you could monitor them at the board level as well, if that's, if that's, if that's what you'd like to do. And then you can see, the last report is a report about suspensions and expulsions. And you've seen this graph before, but it shows disaggregated data. And, and it gives you a glimpse of the numbers of suspensions and expulsions for different ethnic groups in our systems. So that's just a really quick glimpse of the historical data that hopefully provides you a baseline of where, what we could monitor in the future. So again, the, the purpose of our monitoring reports is to provide ongoing data. So it's kind of, think of it as similar to our KPI system where we want little glimpses of how things are going in our schools instead of providing a long backwards in the past glance. That's what some of our systems do and we'll talk to you about the differences between those. So it would be the suggestion that there would be a monthly report that would just go in the report section and it would be largely written report and so it could be processed in that way. We could of course entertain questions about it, depending on board leadership, what you would like. But it would be as, just a static report with updated data as we go through. And then the goal for this meeting is for us to come to some consensus on what you would like to see. And preferably, not only what you would like to see, but what we have to provide. Because some of the data that you've suggested in the past, we actually don't have. So we would prefer to use systems that we already have to do that. So here are some suggested reporting categories. And again, this came out of a lot of partnership with Dr. Shonda Gary, looking at these different data sets and being able to present these to the board as a glimpse of what is, what are our safety and security systems at our schools look like? And then what does our well-being for our students look like as well, just as kind of a dipstick marker. So we suggest suspension and expulsion rates at each level. So that would be broken down, elementary level, middle school level, high school level. We would offer to not disaggregate it much more than that by school because we want to be careful about protecting any information about any of those incidents that might be happening at each of those levels. And a lot of those numbers are going to be relatively small month to month. So they're, they're not going to be large, they're going to be small enough that you could, if it was at a school, you could figure out who it was. And we want to avoid that. We talked about counseling referrals to our mental health providers. We're very, very excited that we now have a mental health provider associated with every one of our 66 schools. And we are able to be able to monitor the number of new referrals coming in. For that data point, I would encourage us, at first, we're going to have a whole bunch of referrals because we now have these counselors. And so the numbers will look really big at the start. But then we could monitor them as an ongoing data point to give you an idea of how many kids and families are seeking mental health supports. And we would break that out by levels as well. The major discipline incidents are the ones that I referred to in the graph that we just looked at, broken down by different categories. Some examples of those may be either weapons or look-alike weapons that are brought into schools. The most common weapon that's brought in is probably a knife. And so we could break those down and kind of talk about what those look like in our schools. And we're currently keeping track of all of that in our synergy. Major aggressive behaviors are also categorized in, in that assault. And we can look at each of those categories and break those down and other extreme behaviors. And again, those would be broken out by level, not by school, to be able to protect the information about each of those incidents. And then finally, Dr. Dosenata talked a little bit about our SRMS systems, our Safety and Risk Management Systems. And we thought it could be an interesting data point for you to be able to say, how many SRAs, suicide risk assessments are being done across the district in the month of June? How many are being done in October? Again, as a monitoring point over time to be able to establish a baseline, how many threat assessments? How many incidents of fire starting and how many CIRK, Sexual Incident Response are, are being processed through? So that's the suggested data reporting categories that we would suggest that provide a glimpse of our systems. Now, completely understand, this is not a holistic picture of everything going on in our systems and we don't have the ability to do that yet.
Dr. Sprouls, can we stop here? Because this is a complex one. Then look around and see if anybody has questions, then we can go to the monthly monitoring. That way they're not overcrowding ourselves.
Of course. I think there's just one more slide, but we could, but that slide's kind of different than this, so let's get questions now. Yeah, thank you.
Before we go to the question, I just want to thank you. You know, this has been very painful discussion for a long time, but it is worth it. I really want to thank Superintendent Perry, Mr. Kaplas, you know, Dr. Sprouls and Dr. Udo Senata and so many who came together and Dr. West is not here. So this really came out. And it's not like the board leadership alone wanted it. It took us a while to even figure it out what is, we are thinking of more like it's a dashboard with so many dials. Doesn't mean any one dial will tell us the answer, but together as a composite will give us a thing. So I just want to leave that as a disclaimer. The second thing I want to really say, and Vice Chair Bethel was chairing this meeting, we really had, like six out of seven of us had really, at least shown an informal vote saying that these are some of the data points that we are looking for. For us, the questions we were looking for, the data is what you're supplying to support those questions. So I just want to get that on the record, that it is not just board leadership alone. It was very clear in that meeting. So not only board leadership, but also six out of seven people had indicated. So that question is already addressed. So moving forward, we are talking about what you are going to, what you already have, that is what we are hoping. We don't want it to be a perfect thing, but at least we can start having this data available so that we can all start thinking more, using the data to get better. That's the hope. I wanted to be out on the record today. Go ahead.
And I just want to add to that, you're 100% right. We were trying to give some credit to the amount of time you spent in helping us figure out exactly what data you're looking for. I think that was the reference.
Go ahead. Director Kyler.
Going back to what Director Hyun was asking earlier, where it says extreme behaviors, I assume there will be some sort of list or committee that will come up with how to define what an extreme behavior is versus a non-extreme behavior. And that would just be the same as what's a, what's a serious enough felony to call the police and a crime that doesn't require the police being called. Would that be correct? There'll be some group that'll come up with that?
Yes, that's correct. And we actually already have those categories. So the way we would define those, if you refer back to the K-12 major discipline incidents graph, that's, that's what I was trying to just summarize when I called them extreme behaviors. It's categorized as these. And we do a lot of training on how to categorize those. Now, in full disclosure, is it the same exact thing at every school, as you know, that's interpreted differently? And so the data gets entered differently. But we do a lot of training for consistency on that. So yeah, thank you for that question. And if the board would like these would be the categories we will report in.
Director Hyun, your hand is raised.
Yes, it is. Thank you. So I'm reading through the major discipline incidents. My question is, do we also track what you don't consider major, major discipline incidents? Because even minor incidents, when they're consistent and ongoing, can have a very negative effect on a student's well-being and their safety, you know? That can become bullying. So, you know, it would be good maybe if, if you're tracking to see, is there a pattern of things that don't quite fit into this major category? But when repeated over time, they, they become a major thing.
Appreciate that. And honestly, I think sometimes the minor but persistent things that happen to a child, accumulated effect can be more impactful than one of these. I think that's what you're saying.
Yes. That is absolutely true.
I completely have seen that and completely agree with that.
Can I ask a follow, I just want to follow up. Is it that you, because we do track those at the building level and even at the district level. So we could tell you which student, the number of offenses they have. I mean, we, we have access to that data. We would never share student data here. So the schools monitor all that time, but my question back is, is that something you'd like in a, in part of this monitoring report? Do you want all of the discipline data or are you just looking at major incidences? That's the question. That's the question.
Maybe for, maybe, I can't speak for everybody, obviously. I, I would be interested in patterns of continual, I mean, obviously not knowing an individual student, but as you guys are tracking that information, I would be interested in if there's patterns of this kind of behavior that are affecting our students. I don't, I don't know what your data looks like to tell you what that would be exactly, but you know, do you see, let's, let's pick a school. I'm going to pick on McKay, because that's my high school. So, let's say there's a pattern of this going on at McKay. So, I would like to know that there's a pattern going on in a school and that, how you are dealing with that.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
That's a good question, and let's kind of go around.
Just really quick, I apologize, Dr. Shonda Geary, some of that, Director Hyun, those behaviors do get rolled into, if you look at harassment, intimidation, or bullying, those can be a, a level of small but persistent behaviors that are categorized in there, as well as discriminatory harassment behaviors. Those can lead, those can be marked as that.
Very good.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
That would be good.
Yeah, please, Vice Chair Bethel.
I didn't want, did, did you have your hand up first? Like, I just cut you off.
Sorry, who raised the hand? I'm losing it.
A couple of things that I think are missing here, and I think it's really important, clear down at the school level, that we have some notations of how many times we've called parents in and spoken with them and worked out how they can back us up and how they can be helpful. Because I think it, that, it comes down to that so often. And without that parental support.
It's hard.
Yeah.
The other one I had is that I like to keep track of how many times we've excused kids from the classroom.
Yeah, exclusionary.
Maybe, you know, they haven't wrestled with someone or anything else. But if, in not paying attention and disturbing everybody around them, and they have to be excused from the classroom, we need to know about that if that's happening. And that needs to be also sent to the parent. As, I heard Marty say several times, you know, parents don't always find out about those things. And then they're really shocked when something semi-major happens, and we haven't kept in touch with them.
So, I just want to respond on a couple of those. One is, any of the major offenses, part of the process already is contacting parents. So, that's already in there. So, you can assume if there's a major offense, because those led to out of, time out of school, that a parent was contacted, because that would be required by policy. But the second thing is, the exclusionary practices at elementary is what you're hitting on there. And that's something that with that reimagining school discipline, we really are trying to figure out, how do you monitor what really is exclusionary? Is a sensory room break exclusionary? Or is that how you get yourself back together in order to come back? Is that part of your system? And we, because we don't have a lot of out-of-school suspensions, and very rarely do we have an elementary expulsion. So.
Right, and I do realize that, that we have often excluded from the classroom.
Yes, and we're trying to figure out how do we monitor that better, so I'm agreeing with you.
How to monitor it, and also how to make it clear how serious that is. You know, if it's happening in the morning, happening again in the afternoon, and the next morning it comes in the same frame of mind, we need to have that material to the parent. It isn't a major undertaking, but that parent needs to know that that kid's missing a percentage of their time in the classroom.
I think we, we agree with that, Director Goss. And the, the thing that Superintendent Perry was alluding to is that we currently don't have a system for tracking all of, I was elementary principal for 15 years. I made hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of calls to parents and didn't record it in any fashion or talk to parents at pickup. You know, like those, those types of things about exclusionary practices are important. So, we, we're try, we don't have that data yet. We think it's important though.
And the other thing just to mention is that our school teams, especially our PBIS teams, they do monitor trends. They monitor, monitor small incidences. They monitor where in the school are you having the majority of the incidents? Do we need more supervision? Do we need to reteach? Do we need, you know, so at the school level through our PBIS systems, they do track that. And the question then is for the board, what is it, as you pick yourselves up, up here, what, what do you want to monitor? Yeah, but those are in place in the schools and really important. And we can share about them, even if you decide you don't want the data. You can even say, tell me how it works for a team of, at a school to monitor data. I want to know what that looks like, even though you're, you might say, we don't, we can't pull up that amount of data to the board level. But we want to know what it looks like.
Director LePold is raising his hand there.
Yeah, thank you for, for calling to me. I just first want to say that I'm, I'm actually really excited about this monthly report, just because, you know, if we're looking at reimagining school discipline and focusing on, hey, how can we make our systems better to fit the needs of kids? Then this is going to be really helpful, I think, as we move along. The downside, right, the, kind of what I'm getting the sense of from our board is it seems like every board member wants to go their own direction on it, and, or like have different things. And so, I recommend maybe that our board has a work session where we each bring a table here. Here's one, two things that I think are important to have on this, and then we can prioritize what, maybe top things that we think should need to be on this report. Because if it's going to be monthly, it's going to be something that is a very big part of our job. And you know, as far as things that we're looking at. And we need to make sure that we do it right. What I don't want to see is our board being unclear about what we're wanting to see on this report, and then we're getting upset with the superintendent and with the district, you know, a month or two down the road, because it's not matching what we as an individual want. I think that maybe having a work session where we make it very clear, here are the things that we want. So, that way we're under one voice, one vision. So, then as these monthly reports come out, you know, it's consistent, and we can all work together to get it done. Maybe, it, it could only be like 30 minutes to an hour, it doesn't need to be super long, but maybe a work session will be helpful.
Director Blassey is raised her hand, and she want to make sure Vice Chair Bethel and Director Blassey and Vice Madam.
I'm totally fine, go for it. I took notes on what I want to ask, so you don't forget.
So, I think kind of to, to Jesse's point, I was looking back at the, the intent behind this. And I, and I too appreciate data, you know, as a recovery and performance auditor, I do appreciate data. But data for the sake of data can sometimes be harmful in unintended ways. But I like the structure of this, because it talks about student safety, security, and well-being. So, I was tracing that forward to the data points. So, belonging, attendance, severe incidents, things like that, counseling referrals, then tracing that to our, shifting our focus. And so, the data points are a lot of the areas that we're trying to shift away from as we're trying to reimagine. So, we have things like, you know, from offenses to incidents, exclusion, inclusion, consequences, all of that. So, I think the point I'm trying to make is, I, I think that this is very, very helpful, very, this is the type of the work that the board should be doing. But if we start getting too far into the weeds, I think we, we get away from the intended purpose, safety, security, and well-being. And so, I, I think this is a good starting place. And my suggestion, instead of, and, and I don't mean to disagree with Jesse, but instead of starting with a work session where we all come up with lots of different data ideas, let's give this a go and, and see how this, how this works. But what are the questions that we're trying to answer? So, when you collect data, you analyze data, you report on data, what are the outcomes you're looking for? And I think maybe the board needs to think about, you know, if we're, if we're looking at data, we're seeing trends, well, what do those trends mean? And are we the best individuals to determine what those trends mean? Maybe we have some thoughts and ideas, but I think to the superintendent's point, you know, in the buildings, they are looking at this data. So, I think sometimes hearing more about what they're doing with the data could be helpful, because like attendance, just for the sake of attendance, I mean, that's, that's, that's a pretty common one. You know, we know if there are declines in attendance, then that, that could be reflective of future problems to come. But if we're looking at counseling referrals, you know, an increase in counseling referrals could be a good thing. So, you know, not just assuming that, again, just numbers and graphs are, are the outcome. This, this is just data, and so what is this, you know, what does the data mean? And, and I, I just see a little bit of a risk of a, a board trying to interpret a lot of data. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, but, but I would just caution us from trying to draw conclusions just from data points. But definitely trend data in areas where we know, you know? So, so anyway, that wasn't really a question.
No, that was a good suggestion, Director Blassey. Thank God you are an auditor, because you know, it helps us to think that way.
Think about outcomes.
Yeah, how to use numbers and connect it.
Right.
Vice Chair Bethel.
So, the first thing that you said is, is what do we want to do with it? And how often do we want to see it?
Yeah.
I don't think that, see, I think seeing it monthly is important, so we can start building our story and understanding. But spending time on it in the boardroom every month, I don't think is necessary. I think that we need to get, get educated and up to speed on some of the things that are really going on in our buildings. I appreciate that they handle this in the, in the classrooms and the, or the buildings. But we need to be accountable to a lot of these things to our community as a board. And so, I don't know that we have a, a direct answer right now as to what we want to do with it. I think it's important data to show a variety of things to our community as how things are going in our district. I agree that I don't necessarily want to see it by school on a monthly basis. But I do think that there's going to be a time where we need to see particular data based on a school, maybe over a quarterly process or a six-month process, so we can look at the systems approach the district takes to a variety of things through the equity lens to determine if that's actually working. It's, I think it's our job as a school board to make sure that the community is fully aware, and we're fully aware that these systems are working. And everyone of our high schools, every one of our, every one of our schools is very different. And if we're really applying an equity lens, which is meeting a child exactly where they are, which is in their community, this data is important to me to understand that. And to talk about the consistent behaviors concept, when we talk about, what are we calling it? The major incident, the major discipline incidents. I think one of the things that I've heard since I've been a school board member, and that actually drove me to run for the school board, is the fact that there are consistent behaviors of students in our buildings that cause major impact on their peers. Bullying is one of them. And if, if you're saying that consistent behaviors wraps up into the discriminatory harassment section over time, and it's not just one incident, I think I'd want to see that disaggregated to understand what, what we're talking about. And again, I don't need to see that regularly, but I want to understand that further. For me, the weeds aren't consistent all the time, but to understand the full story, they are initially. And I'm happy to have that conversation with you offline. But it is, we have heard for a long time in this community that bullying is number, one of the number-one contributing factors to students who don't want to come to school, they don't feel they belong, they don't learn. And I think that it is, by and large, one of the biggest issues that we need to tackle as a community. And I think sharing that information with the community helps bring them in and helps provide accountability. We can look at ourselves to determine what that looks like. So, I kind of agree with both Director Blassey and Director LePold Pion on both concepts. I, I'm not ready for a work session by any means, and I don't think every board member should come with 10 ideas to create a plan. I definitely think we need to have an approach, and I think that this is a great starting point overall.
Let me quickly go to Vice Madam Ebbington, if you have any quick thought. Because we, he's got half, some more presentation. Thank you, thank you. I, I really appreciate, you know, I, I really want to say thank you. This is, I really, Director Blassey, you helped me understand, looking at the longitudinal data will give us trend. You're not looking for all this minute and get lost in the weeds. But, you know, at a board level, we are like floating at 30,000 feet. We need to look for trends. Any big gap that comes up, as soon as the trending starts going up or down, the, up doesn't mean it's bad. It's actually good, life-saving, refer to counseling, right? We don't want some clusters of problems starting. That's how we had two clusters in 2018, we lost several kids to suicide. Recently, we had a violence cluster, one of the 17-year-old was shot and ended up dying. So, we can pick up, if you give us regularly and say, what's going on? Is it like a cluster coming up? The second thing is, I, at least from my point of view, I'm, give us the big data. The little ones, you, school district or school can use it for root cause analysis for your quality management problem. That is, every month, if you can add it to an Excel, just that way, in 12 months, you'll have 12 months' data. More than narrative report, for me, that summative thing will kind of give us an idea, is the number going up or going down? That's all, it shouldn't take more than few minutes.
Just say it, Craig, just say it.
It usually takes more than a few, but not.
You know, it's a, this is the beginning. This, to be honest, I want to be really upfront. 25 years, communities have been coming and knocking at our door. This is perhaps the first time something like this, we are able to publicly say, this is what our trend has been. So, this time it has been painful. But you know, with all the important advantage of all the discussions on safety, discipline, you know, all these things, this is a perfect moment for us to start putting systems in place so that we can be accountable. So, I really want to say, as much as it is so much work has gone in, it is the best thing that has happened in the history of our district. And I have to thank those.
I mean, it's a really great thing.
That's a true data believer there. Let's get on to our last slide. And, and I don't know, does.
Jesse.
Do you still have your hand up?
Yeah, I think you guys all need real-life mute buttons. I'm just kidding, it just, that's fair. I, I wish I was there. So, my, my, my question is, I just want to reiterate the point. I agree with, you know, you know, Directors Blassey and Bethel, that this seems like a really good starting point. I'm really excited to see us before. One thing, what I really want to see is, just as a board, you know, I'm just curious to know, like, do we have consensus to start with this? Like, because I just think it's really important that we give the district a, a real consensus about what we're wanting.
Going to be asking for consensus in the report, that has already been addressed in the last meeting.
Okay, so you feel like you don't need to do that?
You know, as Director Blassey said, start with what we have rather than some adding more, this itself is.
Sure, I think I just have one more slide, just one point to build on what you said in the past was, the way we can have a, establish a baseline and move forward is to decide on a data set and stick with that data set. If we keep, if we keep adding to that, we can't do that. So, it's just something for the board to think about. Okay, so we'll move forward with this. So, I did want to bring up, there's been several mentions of a civil rights data collection, and we've been bringing this up as a, as a data gap. And I wanted to really clearly address where we are with that. So, the civil rights data collection is done every two years, and it's done by the Office of Civil Rights. And so, and it's to identify access barriers to pre-K through 12 educational institutions across the United States. The collections change every two years on what they ask districts and other educational institutions to produce, what data sets they ax, they ask us to produce. Remember the major discipline incident categories? We keep track of these incident categories in our system. The federal government changes their, what they ask us to produce at times. And sometimes it matches these categories, and sometimes it doesn't match these categories. When it doesn't match the categories, we don't need to report that data. So, there are two data points that we, that are required in the current collection, which is actually not going to happen until winter 2022, because this, the collection cycle's been interrupted because of COVID. So, it's, it's actually not a two-year cycle now, it's, we're off, it's on a three-year cycle, basically. So, the two data points that we will be collecting are referrals to law enforcement and school-related arrests. And I wanted to bring that to your attention, because it seems pertinent to what we've been talking about tonight. To remedy the problem, because we don't, you, you didn't see those two categories in this. To remedy the problem, because we don't, you didn't see those two categories in this chart because we don't actually have them right now as a reporting category. As an end result of a discipline action, we don't have referral to law enforcement in our current systems. So we need to fix that. So we have a technical work group that is going to look at our computer systems, looks the way we're tracking data to be able to add these two data points on there. And then there's a functional work group. And this is the, this is really where the rubber meets the road. What, what is a referral to law enforcement? Is it just a call? Is it talking to someone? Is it calling for advice? Is that categorized as referral? What is contact with law enforcement look like on our campuses? So that's where we need to figure out. Because if not, we'll get one school recording one thing and another school recording a totally different thing. We'll report to you, but it's, it's not the same data set. So I just wanted to clearly explain where we are with this data gap that we're addressing. Our current, our technical group met yesterday to be able to fix it in the computers. Our functional group, which is actually much more involved, making sure that we're all recording the data the same, is meeting next week and starting to meet and roll out for our schools.
Thank you.
So that's the last.
And can I go back to the, the?
The reporting categories.
The reporting categories.
Yes.
Because while I agree that we have consensus on the, we want reporting on this and we want reporting, these are the recommended, right now for us, these are the recommended categories with help from Dr. Shonda Geary. But in our conversations, I heard lots of other things. So I just want to be sure that as a full board, you feel good that this is the place to start. And in May, we are also starting the budget process. So we will do our very best to get the first look at a report in May. And as long as you're in agreement with that.
It's in July.
July? Would you like the first one in July? Would you please make a motion that the first one happens in July?
I'm not going to entertain that motion. Ask you to spare more time than what is here's time.
He's going to come back and give the report.
So let's kind of quickly, once again, let's again, you know, the goal is not to overburden our district. As it is, they've got so many things, this is already being measured. Can we agree on this to start? Let's get into someplace, if something is better than nothing.
Yes, I agree.
Can we start this?
Can we just give you a thumbs up?
Is there anybody who has not raised their hand yet? So we got how many thumbs up? Can we at least start with, okay. So, so, and then Perry, did you see all the thumbs up?
I did, yes.
Okay, good job.
I often get other directions when I leave things.
How long has this been that we have not been collecting school-related arrests and law enforcement referral? Going back to how many years this has been going on? I'm not entirely clear.
Oh, I don't, I don't think we have collected that data as an end result in our system. Do you know, Director Kilo? Yeah, I believe it is too. Yeah.
So in 2016, when it was reported last, what did we send?
I think we sent a zero. And that's the, the reporting categories, we've talked about this, Dr. Shonda Geary, at length, that there are, there's, and I think the mistake that we made was reporting a zero and not reporting a null.
Okay.
So if you report a null in a category, that means that it might have happened, but you don't record it. So that's why we're trying to correct it moving forward.
May I ask in that functional or the technical group, is the families or the communities going to be involved? Because, Dr. Udo Senata, you gave me a very good example that sometimes children of color, even when they are walking home, feel, you know, somebody may kind of pull the car next to them and say, what's going on and things like that. So, well, since we, the good thing is we are not collecting. But moving forward, it will give us some kind of operational definition of what is meaningful for the community and also what is possible by our system without making it so broad. But something, so that.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. We can, we can think about probably not including them on the way we collect data and how we define that data because that's really something that we need to account, to report on. Talking to our community about engagement with law enforcement and what that looks like, that's definitely a conversation that we're going to have.
Keep it simple. But, you know, I think, you know, this is wonderful because, you know, we don't have to be perfect, but at least we can understand what is missing so that moving forward, we can get better.
Yeah, thank you.
So having the communities sit in the table and say, this data is really meaningful for me versus this data we think is meaningful for you is a little different, isn't it?
Yeah.
So the request is, because the first thing I heard was having parents. But what the request is, let's get the data and let's get a system of reporting it to you and then go into the community to say, is this?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, that's not it, okay.
The historical data, we have all agreed, moving that two gaps that you are having is school-related arrest and law enforcement referral. Since you're going to put that as a brand-new system, is there a place for some communities, from diverse communities, to at least give us an input while we are deciding what categories make up school-related arrest or law enforcement? Did I explain it clearly?
You did, I think I understand what you're asking. I'm just, I can't, I need, I need to think about, we need to think about that as a system, about the way we involve, we definitely want to involve authentic community voice in our decision-making, 100%. This, the, the categories as related on this data set are very, very technical categories that I'm not sure how a family would.
So I'm not talking about the historical data set, Dr. Sprouls.
I understand what you're asking.
I'm talking about those gaps that you have.
You're asking around the civil rights.
Those two gaps, yeah.
Collection, exactly. And that's what I'm, I'm having, I'm struggling to envision it, I guess. Not, not the idea, the implementation.
Yeah, because the civil rights data collection tells us the definition and tells us how to do it.
Right, it's already predefined.
If they give us input and said, we don't want you to report it in that way, it wouldn't matter because the civil rights data collection tells us.
Right. It's a little bit like saying, like, give us feedback on a 35 mile an hour speed limit. Like, well, there can be feedback on that, but it's still that. And so that's the reporting categories. Now, we can talk about the impacts of that. And I think that's what definitely.
Can we at least educate the community saying, this is the definition civil rights data collection requires? So we all understand what that means.
We can definitely do that.
That's all, that will do.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
That's a start.
Yep, yeah, thank you. Okay.
I think we're going, can we take a five-minute break?
Of course, you can.
Yes, you're the chair and she asked, and I support.
You're the one to tell me.
All right, five minutes break, please.
Okay.
I'm, you know, I'll race you.
It's okay to ask. He's a teacher, I'm not.
10 or 5, 5, yeah.
So you, 5 minutes. So the next set of reports, I, I'm going to request Director Sprouls and Director Udo Senata, Assistant Superintendent, Doctors Sprouls and Doctor Udo Senata, to give us the presentation. If you have any follow-up questions, please email the questions and they'll be able to answer for the sake of moving forward. We have some very important items after that. Everyone has received this, so we'll listen to the presentation. Questions will be in the form of email after the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Shonda Geary. So a quick update for transition to hybrid learning. And as we all know, our secondary kids are coming back this week, those, those who chose to do that. So it's pretty exciting. We did have some new guidance and as we are getting, we're becoming experts around getting new guidance from ODE. But this is exciting guidance. They revised the physical distancing requirements, the cohorting requirements. They said if our county metrics move up, we don't have to scale back schools. So they changed that. And they said that we can do outdoor stationary mask breaks, which was met by our teachers with, with a lot of excitement. So our physical distancing cohorting, and this has been, there's been a lot of buzz in our school community around this. So they reduced the physical distancing from six feet to three feet from student-to-student contact. What this means for us is that we're still moving forward with our hybrid model. But it gives us flexibility because we've had several classrooms where we haven't been able to meet the six-foot requirement and get all students in. And that's been a problem with us to be able to roll forward with our hybrid model. We're still trying to cohort kids around the 36-student cohorts, particularly in the elementary school. Six feet will be the threshold of space when students are eating. And, and that is a big thing to consider, that when students have to take their masks off to eat, they still need six feet of space. So if we, if we had the three-foot space in a classroom, they couldn't eat in their classrooms. So that's something we're hoping that ODE and OHA will look at these, some of these suggestions to get us back to a five-day-a-week all-in model in fall '21. So we wanted to share with the board, but also with the public who's listening, our planning assumptions for the fall. And we are planning for a model where we're having every student that wants back, back in our brick-and-mortar schools, five days a week for a full school day. That's our planning assumption, following all of our safety guidelines as we know as they exist at that time. We don't exactly know what they will be at that time, but we will follow them. But our planning assumption is, we're coming back to school five days a week. Edge will still be an option. And Edge is going to transition into what's called an Edge Connected and Edge Independent program. Edge Independent program is something that's largely student-driven and autonomous. And so they can work through the work and then they have contact times with their teacher as needed. Edge Connected is more similar to what Edge was this year, which is teacher-directed instruction with a, with a set time each day that a student needs, needs to be able to log in with that teacher. So there's two different options for Edge. The important thing for our families listening, and if you could communicate to your constituents as well, is that currently, right now, the window to sign up for Edge for next year is currently open. If families register between now and May 14th, they will be guaranteed a spot in Edge. After that point, they will be dependent on space in Edge, just like any other program. Because our baseline school is going to be a brick-and-mortar neighborhood school, just like, just like we've always had. So Edge will become a program that families can register for. If they register between now and May 14th, they're guaranteed a spot. So, and it's a K-12 program. In the past, we've, we've only had an online program for our high school students, but now we're extending it to K-12. So we're really excited to be able to do that and offer it to our families.
We're pushing out the messaging right now. So what you could do is grab on to the messaging that we're doing as the district and push it out.
I've seen it.
And Dr. Dosen and Doc.
Thank you, thank you.
Look at their clapping for you, you're back.
Don't do that again, please. It threw me off. All right, thank you. So we're excited to announce that we're, we're going to have summer school. And I just want to give you some information about our summer school planning and programming. First, we're going to have summer school at all levels. We're going to have, every school's going to have a summer school option, although it might not be on their site. And importantly, we'll have, Student Services is going to continue their summer work program again. So they'll get some valuable employment opportunities for some of our deserving students. Here are the dates for summer school, so it's July 7th through 23rd for elementary school. So they start right when school, right around when school gets out. And then middle school will go August 2nd through 20th. And high school will start when school gets out and go throughout the summer. So here's what, what students can expect and families can expect for summer school. So at the elementary level, there's going to be a focus on academics and social, emotional learning. Learning recovery, learning recovery will be a priority at all levels. And also, we're putting little examples of what types of programs will be offered. So we, we said there'll be indoor activities, indoor/outdoor activities in summer libraries. But really, there's also going to be a focus on, on PE, STEM, arts. We really want our summer programming to be engaging, right? Especially at the middle school. So at the middle school level, again, it's going to be a three-week, at Leslie, for instance, they're going to have a three-week intensive program where there'll be a high energy, high engagement and also a focus on, on learning, recovery, especially for PE, or especially for language, arts and, and math. And then at the high school level, there's a, there'll be a variety, every school's going to have different programming. I think the exciting one that I'm sharing right here is from C-Tech, where they're going to have a boot camp to, to have our high school students focused on skilling up and doing hands-on opportunities. And then there's also going to be some integration, or some orientation programs for our younger learners in the ninth and 10th grade who are curious about what C-Tech has to offer. And so here's a program, the last summer program that I want to share with you. And it is the Salem Kaiser United Summer Program. And it's through the Special Olympics. And it's, it's a really great program that gives an opportunity for full integration for, which has about 50, or 100 of our students, that's how many were last year. With 100 students, they have about 50 of our students. With 100 students, they have about 50 of our students are students who are, who, who have a developmental disability or learning disability. And they have a peer partner, which is a student that, that works with them and, and participates in, in a variety of activities.
That's awesome.
Fun.
Oh, fun, okay.
That's awesome.
It's really fun. Full disclosure, I had my, my 10th grade son sign up for this, so, and he's really excited about participating. And so, all the informations there about this program, it's going to start in June, go through August. As many of you know, there's a Ironman competition that's going to happen in August in, in, in Salem, and we want to coordinate our end-of-the-program big activity, activity celebration, like a decathlon or something like that, that will culminate at, I think it's North Salem High School. So, that's just another example of the ways that we're trying to really just promote quality summer, summer activities for our students. And then lastly, our moving on, let's talk about graduation real quick. So, we are going to, our, our graduation updates were released through RSSL, the Ready School Safe Learner's Guidance, and the credit requirements for graduation will be the same. So, it'll be 24 credits to graduate. The essential skills requirement was waived. And so, from this point on, and it's actually been a focus for the whole year, is we're really trying to make sure we get as many seniors to the finish line as possible. So, you've heard us use adjectives like having a blitz or really prioritizing seniors, and we're really doing that at our high schools right now to make sure that we get as many across the podium as possible. So, in terms of our graduation ceremonies, just like last year, we're going to have in-person graduation. Most of them will be outdoors. And on this next slide is the details about when those will occur. And so, these are in your board packet. We know that this is one of those events that our, that our board members really like to attend. For my part, I enjoyed hanging out with our, with Dr. Shandra Geary last year at Sprague, so I'll be at Sprague again this year. And we're looking forward to, to just really celebrating our seniors the way that they should be celebrated at the, at the end of the year. So, that's the, the summer ceremony schedule.
Okay, I'm just going to say two things. One is Alice will send out your request, if she hasn't already, around which high school are you going to be there? If not, we'll substitute. And then the community transition ceremony. Alice, I want you to be sure to highlight that for the board because generally, that's been on a budget committee night. And so, this will be your year to go to the community transition ceremony if you're interested. It's, and I have not been, and it's one of our best. So, she'll make sure to highlight that one for you as well. Thank you.
I have a quick question, please.
Yes.
McKay ends at 6:00 PM, when the board meeting starts. Yeah, so I'll take my phone with me to the graduation or show up late, I guess.
We'll look at that overlap and make a determination about what we want to do with that, because the only way to get them all in was to overlap a board night. And I have one diploma I really want to give out, so. And we've got Lynette on that night, so we might think about maybe a different board meeting.
All right.
And as you can see, we're, we're just continuing to do good things for kids through the summer, so that's all I have.
Good job.
Thank you.
I have, wait, I have one question.
Well, email the question. Please email.
Well, I just, no, I'm going to ask this question. Is summer school an opt-in or an opt-out?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Opt-in.
Is it opt-in?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, they're right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's optional if, if people are interested. There is some money from the legislature. We haven't gotten the regs on it yet. I just attended a meeting with a little more detail today, but we are trying to have as robust as possible and focus on activity enrichment, you know, learning, unfinished learning, I think is what they're calling it, and credit recovery. But it's, if you're a, a high school student that's not credit, needs some credit recovery, it will be strongly encouraged, though. How about that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Please, please attend.
Unfinished learning, I think, is what they're calling it. And this is going to be the year where I think summer school is the most popular in the history of, of public schools.
I know, exactly. Sign me up.
Advisor Bebington, you want to ask a quick question?
Um, I would.
No, push the button.
No, you're going to press the button.
Okay. Um, oh. For Edge next year, if you want to join Edge, and let's say it doesn't work out and you want to move back to school, is that allowed? Does that process?
Yeah, there's, there's always circumstances where students need to go back to the, the comprehensive school. So, they'll, if they, if students do want to go back, what they need to do is, is schedule a time to meet with their, with their administrator to discuss the circumstances.
We need to, we have just another, we had to quickly move. The next is budget update.
Thank you.
Sorry, the timing.
Okay. Well, I, before I move off of this one, and I think I do it that way, I have a diploma I want to hand out at South Sioux. My daughter's graduating this year, so I'll be there. Yes, 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 okay. Now, I'm about ready to suck the air out of the room and talk about money. Let's do this real quick. I'll give you a kind of historical context of why this biennium is one of the worst in recent history regarding the funding for the state school fund. Okay, so, you may remember the Great Recession. It really wasn't that long ago. So, I'm going to take you back to 09-11, where that was actually a reduction in a biennium. And then the next biennium, 11-13, was a hold flat. So, it was really two big, four years of big budget reductions. For those of us who still have the scars in this district over a five-year period, we, we had to cut $144 million out of our general fund, okay? So, fast forward from then, four biennial leading to the 21-23, the average biennial increase was 11.5%. It went from a high of 15.5% to a low of about 9.34%, okay? So, we are facing a co-chair's budget, which is exactly the same as the governor's when she released it at $9.1 billion. That's a 1% increase. I, I want you to understand that's a 1% increase, which is not a whole lot better than no increase, okay? Which takes us back 12 years in funding as far as state school fund. We've identified statewide that our current service level would be at 9.6. So, the gap is half a billion, okay? 500 million from 9.1 to 9.6. What that represents for us is approximately a $36 million biennial gap. And so, we get a 49-51 split, but it's essentially, it operates like a 50-50 split. So, that's about 18 million a year at the current 9.1 that we would have the revenue gap. The revenue gap does not take into account the expenses that increase every year, okay? So, I'm not going to get into budget committee discussions here, but I will tell you that we could be facing a state school fund gap with respect to our, our budget in the range of 40 to 50 million dollars based on this funding as we head into the next biennium, okay? So, some of the, and, and that's why it's really important for us as we, and we'll get into much more detail with the proposed budget. But it's important for us to remember that while this, the student investment account is an incredible opportunity, when it's fully funded, that's 36 million. When Measure 98 this year, what do we get fully funding for next year? That's another 20 million a year, okay? That's 50-ish million. Our general fund, our general operating fund is 10 times that amount. It's pushing half a billion. So, when that doesn't get funded appropriately, but others do, doesn't help us from a general operating standpoint. Just want to put that out there. And then one more thing, just to keep in mind, is the Purse Board is considering lowering the assumed earnings rate once again. And when that happens, as Director Blazi knows, our unfunded actuarial liability goes up instantly, which means the next biennium, our payroll costs could increase, depending on what they do, by five to eight million dollars per year. We have zero control over that. So, we're just laying the stage for you that we've got some work to do, and we'll obviously be talking more with the proposed budget, which we'll give you on May 4th. So, that'll be the first budget committee meeting. That's the organizational meeting where the chair and the vice are elected for the 21-22 budget. And that's where the budget committee will receive the superintendent's proposed budget. We will then move into a series of budget committee meetings, one on the 18th, one on the 24th. That's where the questions and the deliberation. And then, if needed, we also schedule additional meetings, the 25th and the 26th, and then on to the board for final adoption. So, the sequence of the budget goes proposed from the superintendent to the budget committee. The budget committee deliberates and approves with a recommendation to adopt to the board. And we would expect that to happen June 8th, unless we change the meeting because of graduation. So, anyways.
Yeah.
It's all about you, isn't it?
No pressure. So, that's just a quick rundown of where we are, and much more to follow in our budget committee conversations.
So, and I want to just follow up on two things. One is just, we should really think about that June 8th date now. I just don't know what we're publishing in the paper. So, there's that. But the thing I was reminded about today is, while the 9.1, there might be some chatter out there about you're getting, you'll be getting federal dollars. The problem is, is that when the legislature underfunds the state school fund, they never come back and pick it up. So, you're just prolonging the cliff. So, it might be okay for one year. But they, they've never in their history come back and made it up. So, the cliff is there, it will be there if we don't get that state school fund up now in this session. The position of COSA, I'm sure it's of OSBA as well, is that the money is there for at least a 9.6, and they can, the legislature can do that. Our kids are counting on it. The federal dollars should be about getting kids back in school for five days. They should be about unfinished learning. They should be additional social-emotional supports. If they backfill the state school fund, because the legislature underfunds us, it's not if, it's when, we fall off the cliff, and then we'll be laying off staff. There, how's that?
That, that was.
That was what you wanted.
Better than I, yeah, that's perfect. Although, we're hoping that that's not the case because...
No, because we're going to get them to get the state school fund up.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, now, something good.
Okay, man, I think Marty has a question.
No, did I forget to put my hand down? I'm sorry. It's different this time, and I don't see it on the, in the normal spot, so I have to open a new screen to do it, sorry.
So, we'll go to the next early childhood education.
That was a little bit like the feedback sandwich. And so, you, you get the tough news, and then you get something on top. And so, what we're getting here is a, a chance to celebrate. Feedback sandwich. So, you lead with something, and then you hear about the dire budget, and then you finish with something strong. So, the early childhood education program is something which is really a point of pride across our district, and it's something for us to really celebrate. It's a unique thing that Salem-Kaiser offers. Normally, in our board meeting, I'm sure you remember last year when Stephanie Wetzel came with some parents, and they could describe to you how important this program is to their families, and we actually had some little kids as well. Normally, we can celebrate with them. Unfortunately, in this environment, we can't do that, but, so you just get me instead of a cute four-year-old. So, what we're going to do is just quickly, oh, oh.
The way Bob described it, it was so easy to operate that.
It's not. I swear it's going.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I got this. Okay, so, this is a Head Start annual report that we need to give as part of our compliance for Head Start. But I think more importantly, it gives us a chance to celebrate our early childhood program. So, I think it's important for us to realize our early childhood educators have been helping families get back to work and taking care of families since the very start of the pandemic. They were our very first group of people in the school district that offered emergency childcare to our doctors and our nurses and our ambulance drivers way back in March and April. And they have been doing that steadfastly ever since. And so, they were, as a cohort, our early educators were our very first teachers and assistants and transportation for our students throughout the pandemic. And I think we sometimes lose sight of that, that they provided that key service. And really, we talk about our secondary students coming back right now. Our early childhood educators have been back since last April, meeting with kids all throughout the summer as well. So, they returned to their regular instructional model in October, supported families in both a virtual model and an on, in-person model, which they, again, really explored lots of ways to do digital learning for a three-year-old with the parent sitting next to them in some unique and innovative ways, and they kind of led the charge for that. We are currently only at 82% enrollment. Normally, you might remember when I come and say we have this gigantic waitlist for preschool promise and Head Start. We currently don't have that. We're, we are funded at more spots than we are, we have currently enrolled. However, we don't anticipate that, that once we're all in back next year that that will be the case. So, here are just some numbers from 1920 and 2021. You'll notice our Head Start numbers actually increased, and the reason why we're only funded at 82%, but we're up to 400 kids, is because we have increased funding for Head Start, which is exciting. One thing the board has advocated for since my tenure in the district has been, how can we get more slots? And we're getting more slots in Head Start and preschool promise. You'll notice the one that it goes from 300 to zero was our tuition-based preschool. And we made a decision as a district to move away from tuition-based to be able to support preschool promise and Head Start. We needed the space, basically, for those programs. We haven't fully, fully utilized those spaces because as soon as we made that decision, a pandemic broke out. So, we might skip this video, but send it. So, they, they had a very successful material distribution event at their, at, and they gave out supplies to families. One of the interesting things, you can see the, the little guy with a dental assistant reaching into his mouth. They did dental checks, but with keeping the students in their cars. They were able to do dental checks, and they identified lots and lots of students who then needed a dental checkup and a dental follow-up based on our screening event that we did in the parking lot at, at the, at the campus of East Salem. So, it was a very successful event. And again, I think just one more way that we, as a school district, work together to support the fabric of our community. And, and for listening for Steph Wetzel and, and her team, really proud of all that they've accomplished this year. That was the little guy that was having his mouth looked at. Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions, you can email it to Dr. Sprouls. Uh-oh, Marty.
It's just a real easy question, promise. So, you eliminated tuition-based preschool? So, when my son went to preschool, I had to pay for it, so now he wouldn't get to go at all?
Now, he's older.
Okay, I'll send it.
All right. All right, thank you very much, Dr. Sprouls. Let's go to the next important item. We've got many action items, so the first action item is to approve Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Perry.
All right, we have the president of SKEA, Mindy Merritt, on the line, I think, if she's still there. If we could take down the slides, Dr. Otosnata. And she's going to present the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. And I just want to say that our educators have had a huge year with lots of changes and have shown up with heart and care and a whole lot of resiliency. And as a reminder, we are the first large district in the state to start back in in-person learning. And Mindy, thank you for your efforts and advocacy for your educators that helped make us better along the way. So, it's been a really important journey, but your teachers that you represent have been just amazing through all this.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. I, I, we could not have done this without your leadership and your guidance, because this has definitely been a year of a lot of unknowns and a lot of, you know, every time we turn the corner, there's been a new update to Ready School Safe Learner, and we've had to really come together and count on each other. And we've had to really come together and count on each other. It's taken all of us to get through this and we couldn't have done it unless we could count on you. And I, I personally have really appreciated your guidance. And so here we are together to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, which will be May 3rd through 7th. So it's my honor to be able to read Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. Whereas, education is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world. And whereas, teachers and licensed specialists mold future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas, this is one of the most challenging times to be a teacher in the history of public education. And whereas, teachers embrace students of widely differing backgrounds. And whereas, our teachers are committed to stopping at nothing to remove barriers to high-quality education for all of our 42,000 students. And whereas, our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas, teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas, our teachers are committed to learning new technologies and innovations in order to learn how to affect teach virtually so as to meet all of the requirements outlined in Governor, Governor Brown's executive orders. And whereas, distance learning is an entirely new process for our teachers, but one that they have embraced wholeheartedly, making more than 100,000 phone calls to connect with and care for our students and families. And whereas, our teachers go beyond teaching to provide social and emotional learning, mental health, support, and address hunger and support the whole child. And whereas, our community recognizes and supports its teachers and specialists in educating the children of Salem and Kaiser. And Chair Chandragiri, I'd like to turn this proclamation over to you now because I believe this is your role now as the Chair, who will now be taking over the proclamation and signing it. Would you like to read the last paragraph?
Oh, I am honored, Ms. Merritt.
Or would you like me?
Thank you very much. Now, therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims May 3rd to 7th, 2021, to be the Teacher Appreciation Week and encourages all members of our community to join with the Board in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Thank you.
And thank you, Chair Chandragiri and, and Board. I just want to say, it was so, it really connected with me from what the administrator shared in, in the video from north. Our time was not lost this past year. It was invested. And we have grown, we've all grown. And I just, we keep coming back, we keep learning. And as we continue to grow and reinvest in our students and our staff, it's exciting to see where we're going to be. And I just want to thank all of you for continuing to come back and do the hard work and grow with us and listen because I think that's how we can only get better. So thank you.
I move that we accept the proclamation as read.
I second.
Okay, who seconded?
Director Hyen.
Director Hyen seconds the motion as read. Is there a discussion? Okay, I'm going to say something. I, I really think, thank you very much to all our teachers and staff. You guys have been the first line, first line to keep our kids alive, keep them going, you know, through your ongoing reaching out to them. Yeah, you know, it's almost like the, it kept them alive, literally, kept them going. I mean, you kept, took care of the attachments. So without any of our teachers and staff, we wouldn't have been able to get through this pandemic. So thank you very much. It's such an honor to be sitting in this position as school board chair. It's such a, I don't know what to say. It's such a difficult time in here. And personally, Ms. Merritt, I want to thank you as head of the teaching organization. Several times you have been my teacher, guided me through very difficult times where you can't even talk to anybody. So thank you very much. You have been a wonderful teacher to me. So I hear Director Lepold wants to raise his hand and say something. And after that, you can.
Sure. I mean, I just want to thank Mindy for coming to, to read this today. I mean, I think her, you know, her being here with us, you know, and also, you know, allowing, you know, our Chair to agree to read the, the last paragraph, I mean, that's a class act. And I want to say thank you for your commitment and our teachers. I want to thank you guys all for your commitment to our district. I mean, it's been a tough year, you know, for all of us. And I know that you guys have sacrificed a lot. You've given a lot, you've been over backwards. And I, and I know it's, it's tough because there's just, you know, I wish we could give you the moon, you know, for the work that you've been able to do and for, and for working so hard for our kids. But, but I hope that, you know, you can see the effort that everyone's putting in, Mindy's putting in, that the administration's putting in. I hope that we can continue to work together to make sure that we're getting kids back to school, but we're also doing so safely. So I just want to say thank you for, Mindy for reading this and also to all of our teachers for, for the hard work that, that you guys have been putting in.
Thank you.
Vote. The motion as moved by Director Kylo and seconded by Director Hyen. So I'm going to go around and ask how you vote. Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Kylo.
Aye.
Director Goss.
Aye.
Director Hyen.
Aye.
Director Lepold Pion.
Aye.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
And myself as Chair, Satya Chandragiri, aye. So the motion passes as voted, there's no, no votes and nobody abstained. So let's go to the next one.
And we can clap because we are in person. It's our, it's our new thing. We're going to clap because we're in person.
Oh my God.
All right.
I feel, I'm blushing under the mask. Approve the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation, Month Proclamation, Superintendent Perry.
All right. Debbie Joa, our prevention coordinator for the district, is on the line with us again. Debbie, thank you for being here and also thank you for being the leader that you are in our community around child abuse prevention efforts. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, Chair Chandragiri, members of the Board. I think it's fitting that we're reading this proclamation tonight since so many of our students are coming back into our school, school buildings this week. Some important pieces of child abuse prevention are educators who have eyes on students and continue to build strong and positive relationships with our students. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas, the health and safety, the health and viability of our community is dependent upon the investment in our most vulnerable children. Whereas, in 2019, there were 13,674 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of which 1,439 were victims in Marion and Polk Counties combined. And whereas, we encourage all members of the community to become aware of the issues involved in the prevention of harm to young people so that the next generation will be strong, safe, and successful. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are priority and the needs of families are met. And whereas, passage of Senate Bill 415, effective January 1st, 2020, added school board directors to the list of mandatory reporters of child abuse. And whereas, the school board amended Board Governance Policy for Board Member Code of Conduct to state board members acknowledge their responsibility as mandatory reporters of child abuse and will educate themselves on the requirements through district training and/or other means. And by doing so, board members demonstrate their individual and collective commitment to the safety of children in our community. Now therefore, the Board of Directors of Salem Kaiser School District 24J asks everyone to join together in protecting our children and does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Motion to.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. Okay. Well, the motion was moved by Vice Chair Bethel and seconded by Director Kylo. What, 10 nanoseconds before Director Goss tried, it doesn't matter. So is there a discussion on this topic? Yes, Vice Chair Bethel.
I just want to say, I, I see that Kelly Prosa from Liberty House is still on the line after several hours. And I, if Liberty House, Family Building Blocks, and CASA of Marion County have worked collaboratively in our community for a very long time to protect kids, and the hashtag Eyes On Kids is a very popular hashtag, since 2021 and COVID, excuse me, 2020 and COVID to represent the fact that we've lost eyes on kids. And we anticipate a significant increase in reporting coming into the fall of 2021 for kiddos who are returning back into classrooms, who have been harmed in our community unfortunately. And I just want to say thank you to Kelly and her team, but also Debbie Joa, who shows up repeatedly with these organizations to advocate on behalf of all the kids in our district. I see her when I'm participating in different committees and she brings a really valuable perspective that's different than the organizations that we typically would see in the nonprofit world taking care of kids. And I'm just really proud that we constantly show up, but the fight's not over, we have to do more and we need to put it into child abuse. As Shaney Starr said to me two weeks ago in another meeting, she'd love to not have a job one day. And I think it's a great goal to have for an organization like CASA to say that. So thanks for all that you do for our community, Kelly and Debbie.
Thank you. Any other discussions?
Director Lepold has his hand up.
Director Lepold.
Yeah, you know, I just want to, you know, I want to thank Director Bethel for her words and, and for the work of a lot of people in our community. But what I want to say is, I want to make sure that we recognize, you know, the weight behind this proclamation. Child Abuse Awareness Month and what it stands for, so that way it isn't just words. You know, this last year, we saw a huge decrease in child abuse reporting during the pandemic, which means that a lot of these kids weren't getting saved. And that hurts, you know, for students who grew up like me, school is often the place, the place where they feel safe. You know, there's, it's their safe place, you know? And for many of these kids, being locked away with your abusers for years is a nightmare. You know, at least I know it would have been for me. So my heart's pretty, my heart's heavy for these kids. As we begin to reopen our schools and get back to seeing these kiddos again in person, we need to all be aware of this. We need to recognize that as a society, we're going to be working through this trauma for years to come. And we just really need to be sensitive of that and take this work seriously and this proclamation seriously. You know, we need to keep in mind that as we're reimagining school discipline, as we're, many of these students are at high risk. We need to keep this in mind as we're making decisions so that we keep a kids-first approach at the center of our decision-making. And we need to keep this in mind as we work to help our students become resilient and overcome these issues. So as Debbie read the proclamation, you know, I just hope that, you know, each of you, you know, try to feel the, the hurt, the trauma, and the weight of this commitment to our students experiencing child abuse. And I, I look forward to helping our kids become more resilient.
Like to make. I just want to thank you, the Liberty House, and for involving, allowing me to work on that, your curriculum for digital safety. When the whole world is on digital, the risk has actually gone up. You know, child sex trafficking and all kinds of risks comes with the digital world. The technology is ahead of our regulations. So it's just like, you know, it's a very nice curriculum. My hope and vision is someday our schools can teach that to everybody. And before parents buy a cell phone to their kids, they should be confident in that. So that's all, it's child abuse prevention is everybody's business and we all can play a role. So with that, are we ready to vote on this? All right. The motion was moved by Vice Chair Bethel and seconded by Director Kylo. So let me go around and call names and each one of you, that, tell me how you vote. Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Kylo.
Aye.
Director Goss.
Aye.
Director Hyen.
Aye.
Director Lepold Pion.
Aye.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
And I also vote, Satya Chandragiri, aye. So the motion passes with unanimously. So, and next we'll go to approve Optimum Learning Environment Charter School Contract. Superintendent Perry, it's all your.
All right. Dr. Sprouls is available to answer questions. This is the second reading of this contract and it is presented to you for your approval and I'll wait to see if you have any questions.
Director Kylo, let's start with you.
There he comes. Let's see, I wonder if you know what he'll ask.
I wonder.
No, I bet, I bet he doesn't tonight.
Okay, new one.
I've got a new one. I've got two, but I'll keep, and I'll keep them short. Article 9, page 16, Section B, flip to page 17, Roman numeral 2.
Yeah, and we've got Principal.
Because I actually read this.
Paulson on the line too, so.
Well, hi Carl.
Hello.
Hey Carl, thanks for being here.
Carl may need to answer these for you, Craig.
That would be even better.
Okay. Carl, if you have a grievance, who does the grievance go to? It says that you'll follow district policy, so if an employee has a grievance, do they go to you and then up through the district chain or do you have your own chain of resolving problems?
That, that would follow the, the district protocol. So it would start with me and we'd try to resolve it at the school level, but it would go to the, to the district, the district's solution. Yes.
Okay. And then if you go down further on that page H, it says Employee Conduct. This is a little more philosophic question. It says, "Olay shall ensure that all employees comply with all district policies and regulations and applicable state law concerning employee conduct." How are you going to do that? How are you going to ensure that they follow it?
I, I think the, the first part would just be, you know, making them aware of that through, through training, through the things that are offered to all employees of the district in ensuring that as, as a, a police action or something. I'm, I'm afraid with, my best response is that it would follow the district process as well. Again, you know, we'd be trying to, just like we do with all of our Forest Ridge Side teachers, providing training and awareness of, of their obligations, legal and otherwise, and then following through with trying to resolve things at the school level or taking it forward to the human resources level.
Okay. Hearing done, we are going to go with the vote. The motion, is there a motion to?
I move to accept.
Sorry, sorry. Who would like to make the motion?
I move that we accept the contract.
Okay, Director Blasi moves and Director Goss. Oh, I think Doctor, Director Goss gets the chance this time, so.
Ah darn.
You are like 30 seconds, 30 minutes.
I can be third.
Okay. To the motion to approve the contract, Optimum Learning Environment Charter School Contract was moved by Director Blasi and seconded by Director Goss. We had any other discussion in this matter? Okay, we're ready to vote? Your Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Kylo.
Nope.
No. Director Goss.
Aye.
Director Hyen.
Aye.
Director Lepold Pion.
Aye.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
And I also vote as Satya Chandragiri, aye. So there's one no, Director Kylo, and everyone else votes aye and the motion passes. Next, 6D, approve not administering the SBAC's assessment for 2020, 21 school year. Superintendent Perry.
All right. Dr. Sprouls is going to present this item and he's going to present you kind of what we see as the range of options, even this, though this was presented as one option in your board packet. We are going to ask you to take action or if it doesn't require a board action, at least get. give us consensus around the direction you'd like to head. I think ideally, we would have known what the options were six weeks ago, and then we could have had a couple board meetings with some input, but we are at the place we are in time around just getting word about what we would be administering this spring. So with that, Dr. Sprouls, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. So as Superintendent stated, I'm gonna present four different options for the school board to work through with some pros and cons associated with each one. The pros and cons may not be exhaustive, you may have other ones that are in your mind that you wanna bring up as well. And then at the end of this time, hopefully, we can reach some consensus about what you would like us to do as a district around our summative assessments. So for the option number one, it would be to administer the S-BAC assessments as required by ODE during the instructional day. And if you look at the board plate, six D, it has the list of assessments that would be required according to ODE. For third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, it's a single test. For seventh and eighth, it's, seventh, eighth, and eleventh, it's two different assessments that would be given to our students. To understand the scope of this, for our third through eighth graders, we're talking about twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six students in grades third through eighth and eleventh, who would be impacted by this decision. Three thousand six hundred and twenty-three of them are in the Edge program. So it would be, we would be testing both our brick and car kids who are coming back for hybrid, and we would be testing their students in Edge. So that would be the first option. This would meet Division twenty-two requirements. Remember, ODE sets forth some requirements that we need to follow. It would meet those requirements. We would be able to administer the test without adjusting cohorts or without changing the transportation schedule for the brick and mortar students. We would have to figure out a way to get Edge students in physically into our buildings, about thirty-six hundred of them, into our buildings during the testing window to be able to make this happen. Parents could get individualized data sent about the S-BAC to them. However, that data will not be comparable year by year. The test has been shrunk, and so we have fewer items, and it's not being administered nationwide the way it has in the past. An important thing for you to know is, you will not be able to use, in any of these options, you will not be able to use the S-BAC results from this year as a comparison to years past. You need to think of these as two different assessments, because they are. So you won't be able to make year-by-year adjustments in any of these.
Point of clarification, if I may. When we were talking about the options yesterday, I think you had mentioned that for the option one, the amount of time on this would be like an hour and a half, two hours, versus the very long time of a normal S-BAC process, and I think it's important that we know that it's a very shortened window.
Right, and the big difference is, for the S-BAC, it typically has two different parts. One of them is a computer-assisted part, which is a multiple guest test. Another one's a performative assessment, and they're not giving the performative assessment this year. So the window is shortened, so it's about an hour, an hour and a half, and we would contain that time. Sometimes even for an hour and a half for some of our students, that, they could take that test for three or four hours traditionally. We would try to make sure that that's not the impact. And we would anticipate for this scenario that we would have higher participation rates, because we would give the test to the students as they show up in hybrid learning. The cons are, we only have our students for about the next six or seven weeks, and we would be devoting a chunk of that time to giving this test, which doesn't provide us any year-by-year data. Another con is that we've heard from lots of teachers and parents in the last week or so who are concerned about giving the test and devoting our time, our precious time that we have with our students. I mentioned the con, if we can't use it as comparison data. And then we also have that this would be a focus of our schools for the next several weeks. We don't, you probably saw that in the North video, this is a focus of schools regardless of how we try to downplay the test itself, getting ready for it, setting up the testing environment for it, getting kids in for that time. It's, it will be a focus that takes away from the care and connection and academic recovery that we would like to focus on. So that's scenario number one, with some pros and cons. Should I go on to scenario number two?
Yes.
Okay. Scenario number two is to give the S-BAC assessments as required by ODE, it'd be exactly as I just described, but give it on Mondays or Saturdays with parents and guardians selecting a testing window. So we would need to reach out to all of our students, forty thousand students and their parents, actually, that's not true, because it's not K-12, it's not all of our grades. So it would be the twenty-four thousand students that I mentioned. We would need to reach out to those families, contact those families, and say, would you like your student to take the S-BAC? If they say yes, we would have to set up a testing window on Mondays and Saturdays. The key with this is, it needs to still be co-horted somehow. We can't un-cohort the kids on Monday, re-cohort them on Tuesday, and say that we're co-hording them. So we would need to, it would be some operational, and we need to provide transportation for students that couldn't provide transportation. Families could opt out of the test in any one of these. So a family could fill out the paperwork to opt out on any of our options, and they could opt out of this as well. So scenario number two would meet Division twenty-two requirements as well. Parents would still get data, and it doesn't directly impact the instructional day. The cons, it is a big logistical thing to bring back twenty-four thousand students on our, for Mondays and Saturdays. To be able to figure out how to do that is something we would need to straddle. We would anticipate that we'd have greatly reduced participation rates, because I have a high school senior, and if I gave her the choice to, would you like to go on a Saturday and take this hour and a half S-BAC test?
No, they wouldn't.
Or not, I can tell you what her participation would be. So, and we can't use the data for year-by-year, which we already discussed that. And there's a chance that the high opt-out rates from this year would continue into next year. Participation rates don't count right now, but they will next year. So it's just that there's a chance that we would have a hard time having strong participation rates in the future. That's scenario number two. Onto scenario number three?
Yes, please.
Okay. Scenario number three is to have parents opt into the S-BAC assessment that is given on Mondays or Saturdays. So instead of just giving the assessment to everybody and you have to opt out, you would need to opt into taking the assessment. And this is being done by several school districts across the state. This gives parents maximum flexibility to opt in. If you really want your student to take the S-BAC, we'd still offer it and figure out a testing environment for your student. And the parents would get the assessment data based from their students. The cons are, ODE has said this would not meet Division twenty-two requirements. So we would be out of compliance with the Division twenty-two, which is something the school board could decide to do. But you need to know going in, there's still a lot of logistical considerations around what that would look like. Again, we can't use the data for year-by-year comparisons, and most likely, we would have very, very low participation rates. Very few families that I've heard from would opt in to the test. So that's scenario number three. Onto the final one. The final one is to not administer the S-BAC assessments at all. And so this one would allow us to use our common formative assessments, which our teachers are currently giving right now. We've discussed them in the board quite a bit, so I think you have familiarity with them. Those are CBM assessments, our iMath assessments. They actually show year-by-year growth. We've been giving them in the interim, we've been giving them through the entire pandemic, and so we have an idea of student growth. It's a touch point for our teachers, and it's actionable data related to that student. So it's, if we wanna go with the data source that is most student-centered, this is definitely it, because it gives teachers information, and honestly, our teachers are gonna be collecting this anyway. When your students come back to school, the teachers need a baseline to know where they're at, and that's what this data source would be. This would provide a maximum focus on teaching and learning for the rest of the school year and care and connection. This would allow our students to focus, and our teachers to focus on student growth and development, helping us identify students who might need additional supports in the summer. This is a data-centered dataset, and we've heard from several different groups in our community that this is what they would prefer. The cons are, this does not meet Division twenty-two requirements. We'd be stepping out of Division twenty-two requirements if we did that, and we would not have an S-BAC score to send to parents. So like a fifth-grade science score, if you opted in, in the other ones, you could get a fifth-grade science score, which would just be a discrete score, just one point in time, but it would be a score that we could send to parents. Is that the governor calling to tell us which one to?
The president calling me, telling me, listen to.
Really?
I'm just kidding.
So, okay, so those are our four different options. One quick thing about Division twenty-two, and then Director Hyen, can I just finish this one statement, and then I'll call on you with Dr. Shonda Gary's. For Division twenty-two guidance, if we step out of compliance with Division twenty-two, the way we get back in compliance is to provide an action plan. You may remember with our PE minutes, our instructional minutes, you might remember this a couple of years ago, we were not in compliance with Division twenty-two on our PE requirements. We also weren't in compliance with our health curriculum. I think the health curriculum was two years ago, maybe PE was three years ago. So what we did with that is said, we're not in compliance, ODE, this is our action plan to get back into compliance, and they said, okay, great, we approve that action plan, follow that next year. And then we were back in compliance. And so if we decide to step out of compliance this year, we would submit an action plan with your guidance, saying, this is how we're gonna get back into compliance, because we're gonna give the S-BAC next year, and following all of the assessments around that. And then that would get us back into compliance next year. So that's the big decisions and four different options.
So may I suggest a simple process? What if you take option number one and two, and try to at least get some kind of, whether up or down to that, and then option number three and four? Because, you know, with four options, with one resolution, I don't know how to vote on that. And then we can go in the next round and say, out of those option one and two, which one should we? Would that be parliamentary, Mr. DeCapples?
Can I make a statement, though?
Yeah, we'll come to that, just, I just don't know how to grapple with four options and one resolution.
This isn't really a parliamentary question, it's just you as a board chair figure out how you'd like to structure the, it's just a conversation at this point, there's no motion.
All right. So we'll start with Advisor Benton, and then we'll go to Director Hyen.
Not to put you in the hot seat, but as educators, what option would you choose that would be best for students and their families?
That is so putting me in the hot seat.
Way to ask the hard questions.
Like many decisions, this has lots of different stakeholder inputs and lots of different values for different groups. If it's a student-centered data system, which is where my heart goes, I would go with the formative assessments, because that informs instructions for kids. And I think you could probably all tell, that that's the one that I would go with as an educator. But as an educator and as a board member, there are different considerations that you have than I might make in that.
Thank you.
So that's what I would say.
That's a brilliant question. I mean, you kind of answered, took care of all our confusion. Director Hyen?
Yeah, that was a good question. That's what I always ask a doctor, you know, what would you choose to? So I have never liked S-BAC. I loathe it. I don't know who came up with it, I don't like it. I wish we had option four as the way we did things, because to me, it makes just so much sense. The issue I have, of course, is as a board member and not the teacher or administrator, is we do have a legal obligation to do Division twenty-two. And also with the PE example, we had no physical, get it, way to actually implement that, where, I see that Director Lippold Pion kinda got my pun there, but we do now. I mean, neither way to implement it is very good, but we do have a way to actually implement our legal requirement for Division twenty-two. And so I feel like I have to, in good faith, try to get participation to do our job and do the Division twenty-two. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I just had to say that, you know, I did a face pull onto Marty's pun. But, yeah, I mean, when I look at this, I'm thinking in my head, and I mean, of course, it's all to interpretation of each of us, you know, I'm thinking in my head, which option puts kids first? You know, and I'm thinking about, you know, my little sister going and starting up at North this weekend in person, you know, and other students. That's kind of what I'm, the lens I'm trying to look through, and due to the fact that the S-BAC this year is not gonna be usable to do a year-by-year comparison, which is, you know, when we're looking at, hey, what's the usefulness of this data? I'm just, I don't see it. Due to the fact that our district and our teachers are already collecting data that could be argued is more useful in improving student achievement, and due to the fact that I believe students need every hour that we can possibly get in the few weeks that we have this year. You know, I believe that we should go with option number four personally. Like Marty, I mean, and I believe many of you, you know, I've never been a big fan of the S-BAC. I think that it promotes the culture of putting unique shapes into a cookie cutter, and I'm not a big fan of that. So I'm okay with not doing it this year. I do see the concerns of not following the legal requirement, as Director Hyen brought up. I do know that many districts throughout the state are having this conversation. Some districts are opting out. So there are quite a few, there are all districts doing this, but there are some districts opting in. So just wanted to let you guys know, we're not alone in this conversation. But I just think, personally, based off of looking at our students and looking at our situation, I think that we should choose option number four. That's my opinion. So thank you.
See, Director Goss? Do you have any discussion? Yeah, no, 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 you have any such a discussion? I just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance.
I see no use for S-BAC this particular year. We have had an extreme year. Kids haven't been present for a lot of it, it's been different. And that, since the material we would gather on that basis would give us nothing to use anyway, because it wouldn't be a full year, it's not comparable to any other year, I think we ought to take four for sure, and what I had read, it's not going to bother us much.
Director Blasi?
Thank you. So, so a couple thoughts, but to summarize upfront, I too agree with number four, but I wanna be clear that the why, because I know there's always been a lot of talk about S-BAC and summative versus formative testing and all of that, and just a reminder, you know, because there's been this debate for years, but, you know, part of the requirement, you talk about Division twenty-two, but the reason that the states got together and selected the S-BAC, although not probably the best testing, you know, years later that we know, was to identify inequities in learning and opportunity gaps, and to help states address those inequities. And so I just don't want any decision that the board, or recommendations that the board makes or the district decides on to be confused with, we're not interested in complying with requirements, because again, as a reminder, you know, the summative piece is required for states to receive Title I funding. And so not wanting to put that at risk, but we have asked that question, the superintendent has asked, you know, the Department of Ed that question, and it sounds like, you know, if we were to get back in compliance next year, that would not put our Title I funding at risk. And again, having done a performance audit on the S-BAC, not once, but twice, the anxiety around this test and all of that, you know, the negative consequences of this particular test, I just don't think is a good option this year. Our students are already, they already have enough, and that anxiety, I think, would just add, so I would go for number four.
Director Kylo?
I cannot go for number four. I'm not prepared to violate the oath I took three and a half years ago and four years before that. I don't believe, I don't believe any administrator or anyone in this room would willingly say publicly, it's okay to violate the law, we're supposed to be setting examples for students. And what's the example? And what's the example we're setting? It's okay to violate the law when it's convenient? That's not a message I want to be a part of, or I want to send. So I could support one, I could support two, cannot support three and four.
Thank you, Director Kailo. Vice Chair Bethel.
So I have some questions about this process. The first one is, what's the risk of opting out?
So Division 22 is a very long list of things that school districts must do, and so the state assessments are part of that. If you do not do a state assessment, you are non-standard. That's the phrase that the law uses. And so the consequence is, the district would report that they are non-standard because they have not used the S back assessment. You'd report that to the Oregon Department of Education. The Oregon Department of Education then will send you a notification that you're non-standard, and you then have 90 days of ODE's finding of deficiency to submit a plan that's acceptable to ODE. And, I mean, the reality of this is, I cannot, in good faith, as your lawyer, tell you to violate the law, and I won't do that. This is risk management for you at this point. You'll have to determine as a policy matter, whether the greater good is an option four rather than an option one or two. It sounds to me like the potential consequence is, after 90 days, if, presuming that ODE finds a deficiency because of not giving the assessment, if all you have to do is write a letter that says, yeah, we didn't do that this year, we'll do it next year, and if ODE checks the box to say, that's an acceptable plan, you're home free. I mean, ODE will not tell you to not do the assessment, they can't, because they've told the federal government that in order to get federal money, they will make you do the assessment. So the consequence may be extremely minimal. That's what, that is what you would be banking on in options three and four. You know, if you ask your tax consultant, should we file our taxes on time or not file them at all? The tax consultant will always say, file them on time, and you can take the risk. And I think that's kind of where you are here. According to the OARs in Division 22, and then the statute that talks about the consequence, you'd for sure get a letter of deficiency, and you would for sure have to submit a plan within 90 days, and you'd presume that ODE is going to approve the plan. And your plan would be, we'll do it next year. And I believe some school district boards are taking that option. But it does not comply with administrative rule.
Thank you very much. Director Hyun, do you have a question? Oh, you're sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a few questions. So the next question is, I've heard a few people say that you can't compare it, almost implying that it doesn't matter, but my kids have been in school this whole year, receiving an education. And in full disclosure, I opt my kids out of S back tests, because I don't believe in putting my kids in a box, just like Director Lippold-Pion said. But this is a legal requirement, and I don't, I guess I don't understand the disconnect in the fact that my kids haven't been in school this year, they've still been learning, so how come we can't measure their learning now? And then the second part of that is, if you apply the test in '21, '22, what are you going to compare it to?
So I think I might have misspoke, Director Bethel, in, so when I said you wouldn't be able to compare year by year, it's not that it wouldn't be a measure of your students' learning, because it would be a measure of your students' learning at that discrete point in time. We're not going to be able to use this instrument to go back in, because we didn't give it last year, so we would go back two years and look at, if your students had taken S back at that time, we couldn't say, look at their growth pattern, based on where they were two years ago to where they are today. So a lot of our achievement results, the results policy, is based on year-by-year S back growth. You won't be able to use this data point for that, either as a collective or as an individual student, because they're two different tests. So that's where you could look at it and say, oh, she got this score. That you'll be able to do. You won't be able to look at it and compare it to the score she got two years ago.
So what's the point of giving it ever again, or at all, if we're not able to create this trajectory of comparison? Because I feel like that's all we're doing, is trying, basically, I feel like S backs are a way to measure whether or not the education is being received by my child in their advancement. But we've now not had it now, then, you don't want it now, but you want it next. I just feel like it's broken, and why do we keep doing it, other than the fact that there's this law?
Well, and I know I'm an outlier in this room, I like the S back, I have to say. I like it, I seriously do. I like it, it's a well-developed test, in my experience, that really tests students' knowledge, if given year by year by year by year, that you can establish that trajectory. It's broken right now because of the pandemic. And so we, the only way, and it's broken this year, because we're not going to give the full test this year. We're not going to give the, I really like the performance assessment, and I like the computer-adapted test part of it as well. So I know that's not popular, but it does give us data over time, and it does give systemic data, as Director Blassey said, it does give systemic data, where you can look and say, are there pockets of kids that aren't getting the education they need? It gives us that data.
And it gives us the accountability data, school by school.
It gives us the accountability.
And district. But it doesn't do that this year.
It even allows us to compare our district to every other district in the nation, but this year, it doesn't allow that. And last year, we didn't give it at all. So your question about when do we get back on track, it's next year, unfortunately. That's the.
How much of that testing is dependent on what program they have been in, whether they have been in ed, or whether they have been in any of the other things we offer? And you know, you'll know where they are at that minute, but you won't know why they got there.
Okay. I just want to make sure, okay, Director Hyun is raising her hand, and then that way we get everybody, then I have your questions for myself. Director Hyun.
So Mr. Dukopoulos, you said that if we went with option three or four, we would be considered non-standard, and we'd have 90 days to submit a plan, and most people are submitting a plan that says they're going to do it next year. And my concern, of course, about doing it next year, is this was, what, two weeks to flatten the curve, and it's been a year. What guarantee do we have that we're going to be any different than this year? I mean, certainly want to be different than this year, but there's no guarantee. We could be in the same boat we are next year, and that, you know, I hate to kind of push it down the road, because right now, the way things look, it doesn't look like things are going to change.
Director Goss, do you have anything else to add? I have a few questions, if I may.
No, I'm done.
Thank you. Yeah, some of the questions, if everybody's done, can I ask a few questions? Thank you. So I had sent these questions earlier, so I'm a little troubled, to be honest. I'm a physician, coming from healthcare background. It's like saying, don't test anything, you know, just wait till the, you know, don't do blood tests, it's a little inconvenient, but 10 years later, you have a kidney failure, and then say, oh, I should have tested. I'm interested how communities of color, or various communities which are disadvantaged, what is their current cross-section, how much, where they stand? If we don't know what we don't know, does not matter if it is the best test or anything, at least you've got some measure, in addition to whatever else we are using, to at least give us a starting point, and how much is the scatter of learning, so that at least we know from an equity lens to cover that. So that's number one question.
Can I answer that one, before we jump on?
All right, please, go ahead.
So that question, it's very, very important to know where our students are, regardless of the S back or not. Our teachers are doing that right now with nationally-normed data. So we could present that data to you in a nutshell, exactly what you're asking for, regardless of the S back.
Okay, that may be true, but we need something across 65 schools, and we need something. Let me get a, the second piece to that is, knowingly, ethically, you are asking us to, essentially, it's like saying, I want my hospital's accreditation to go away, or certification to go away, then I'll submit a plan of correction, we are hoping that thing. Federal government made it very clear, they're not willing to buck the system, even that so-called a steal or something that, you know, the survey was not comparable to the actual testing, they sent it back. Doesn't this send a message that, okay, when first response, we are even trying to be oppositional to the federal government, saying, no, we need you to do something, because President wants our education system to get back some accountability in system, and also most important, to measure how much learning loss has occurred? I heard that statement from the federal part of the education.
So let me answer just that one question. This won't measure learning loss, Dr. Shonda Geary. So I think using the S back or not using the S back will not measure learning loss. I'm not arguing for it or against it, but what you're asking for is, we are going to, our teachers are doing that right now, separate from the S back. Our teachers are doing that right now, to be able to figure out where our kids are and where they've been. A one-single-point data, just giving a fifth-grade test for science is not going to give the information that you're seeking.
What I'm trying to say, what is the way to measure what we have been providing as comprehensive distance learning? Will it at least test what they learned during CDL?
S back, no. What our teachers are giving, well, yes.
Then what is that we are going to be giving now? Just modified S back, what exactly are we, what does it test, at least can you explain to us?
Well, it tests different things at different grade levels. So if you look back at the board packet, you can see what's tested at different grade levels. And so at third grade, they're testing ELA, English Language Arts. At fourth grade, they're testing math. At fifth grade, they're testing science. Sixth grade, ELA. Seventh grade, ELA and math, then math and science, then ELA and math at 11th grade. So that's what the S back will be testing.
So what, it'll take a few hours. Anyway, they lost one year of learning, I mean, classroom time. What additional one and a half hours or two hours will make, how much total loss will be there in learning, if they were to have the test on an instructional day?
Well, I guess we could do that math really easily, about 30,000 hours of instruction, because it's 23,000 students, and so if it takes about an hour and a half, that's about 30,000 hours of instruction.
But they'll come during the same classroom time, right?
Exactly. Right, that's the question before the board, that's exactly what it is.
It's not like a separate, you have to bring them separately outside the class.
I think that you're asking really important questions, Dr. Shonda Geary, and I don't know if everybody else on the board understands what students have been through, but as a mom of two kids in the district this last year, it's been hell. And my youngest learner, I would say, is significantly behind, because she requires in-person learning, she just is a socially-stimulated individual. And all her teachers have done is throw tests at her this whole year, which I've said, do your best and engage where you can, because her emotional health is more important to me than these arbitrary tests that I believe they're pushing on. But they're tests that she's used to, because she's taken them for a while in those classrooms. So like in math, they do iReady regularly. She wasn't afraid of it, she has test anxiety, which is why we take her out of S backs, because she doesn't test, she doesn't perform well. But she was, she was used to the tools that her teachers were giving her, and they know where she's at. Not that they're engaging her, but they know where she is. So when she does come back on Thursday, hopefully, they have a plan, and that they're going to work that plan for the 18 days that she has in person this school year and next year. I'm really stuck on what to do. I'm not, I'm not stuck on whether I think kids should have S backs, because if it was up to me, I would never make them do it. No offense, Dr. Sprouls, and I think you're amazing. But I, I think that we're asked as a board often, and we're told all the time, different things. I haven't heard anybody talk about the equity lens, and whether this request was pushed through that or not, to determine if it was the best outcome for our district. I haven't heard how we can disaggregate data for the other types of testing that we already do in classrooms, like through iReady or whatever else they do, which I know you can do with the S backs. I don't think that I've been provided information, and I didn't really know what to ask before, on what I'm supposed to do as a board member. As a parent, I would say number four, hands down. But I don't know that I get to operate as a parent right now, because I'm a board member, and I did take an oath of office.
Yeah, can I, I think that maybe Gwen and Suzanne are on, too, and I wonder if there's a couple of those equity-based questions, are they?
I think so.
There's a couple of those equity-based questions that they would, there's Gwen.
Gwen's still in her office.
Oh, Gwen, I'm sorry, you're still in your office, so.
Oh, my God, they're all there.
Yeah, Gwen and Suzanne, I think it might be good to just answer a couple of those questions, that way you see that it's not just, we're just, it just gives you the direct information. And did you hear a couple of those questions?
Yeah, I think, good evening, everyone, it's nice to see you. Don't worry about me being in my office, my house is loud, I have three kids under the age of five, so it's much quieter here. I just wanted to say that as we're, as we're thinking through these options, I think we really need to think about who will be, who will be accessing the assessments, where if we have Mondays and Saturdays, for example, if we're using an equity lens on option two or on option three, who are the students who are going to be able to come in on their days off school or on the weekends? Thinking about parents who work on those days, particularly on Saturdays, thinking about kids who, when students aren't in school on Mondays, at the elementary level, at the secondary level, which is where I focus my time, many of our older students have to watch their siblings on those days. So just thinking through equity-driven questions about administering on Mondays or Saturdays, and what that's going to, what that's going to take away. And I think the, from those students, or prevent, create barriers for their access. And another thing to think about with option one is just, I know, I've heard a lot this evening about learning loss, and I think the wrestle about option one is just disproportionate impact on students of color, and students who have an achievement gap in our district, by taking away further days of instruction in order to test to prove that there's an achievement gap on those students. So I think those are some of the equity questions, and I'll pitch it to Suzanne for some more things that we've thought through, through these options as well.
Yeah, actually, Gwen, I don't have anything to add to that. I think you articulated well exactly the conversations that we've had, both at the district level, but also with our colleagues out at the school level, and what their concerns are around administering this assessment. We share the concerns, that the board is asking about how equitable these outcomes will actually be with the data that we're able to collect. We don't anticipate that we would have high participation rates with many of these options, so it would be difficult to draw conclusions about any of the data that are actually gathered through this process.
Uh, Director Lippold, the question I have is, parents, did they always have an option to opt out, like Vice Chair Bethel was saying? That rule has not been changed, correct?
No.
Okay. So Director Lippold-Pion.
Okay, I just want to say, you know, after, you know, I share a lot of the same feelings that Director Bethel was sharing, you know, just looking at the past year. And, you know, after listening to Gwyneth speak, you know, the option seems pretty clear to me. I mean, when I'm talking to a lot of our students, who, you know, I used to lead them in the youth group and stuff, when I'm hearing about, you know, they're stressing out about, you know, being able to come back in person, and it's kind of like we're starting the school year, in a way, just in the fact that everything's in person. And so I think, I just think the burden and the stress that comes with this test to our teachers and to our students, for the limited time that we have, is just, I don't think it's worth it for us to get the data that we're going to be using, when we're already getting the data from more of the local assessments and data that collected by our teachers. So I just think that it puts an undue burden, especially this year, just because it's been such a hard year for our teachers and our students. And so if we look through an equity lens, I would say that option number four, I think, best fits that.
And the EZCBM and our assessments that we're doing, anyway, those we can report by groups of students, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so they are aggregated out by groups.
Okay.
Director Hyun, we'll go to Director Hyun, and then we'll go to Vice Chair Bethel.
So if we took option four, and then gave the plan within 30 days to do it next year, and we couldn't do it next year, what happens to our title funds then?
Yeah, they, yeah, it's a great question. Well, I mean, none of us have that crystal ball, but what we do know right now is that they would be at risk if we were not able to assess next year. So Director Hyun, that's a fair question to ask. We do anticipate that we will be able to assess next year, but we don't know that for sure.
I almost wonder if we went with option one, then I, I almost wonder if, if we went with option one, then we're in good faith doing the Division 22 and if lots of parents opted out on, on their own accord, then, you know, for equity reasons, that, that might be the win situation. I don't know.
Question, you know, 72 or 72 or 74% of our children would be under Title One if I remember right from the data, something like that, 70-plus, right? So it's a huge risk we are taking. There are so many real benefit to having Title One Fund, including Parent Academy, et cetera. I like to look at this in a different way as a person of color. When you say, you know, there is, as parents, we are ready to face, we are not saying it should be a perfect score, but we as a parent want to know what is the baseline? How much more should I help my child? And the second thing is, it's almost like we are telling, because another thing is as school or staff, we cannot tell parents to opt out. I believe that is not allowed by the law. So we are asking the board to essentially do the bidding for them. That doesn't sound, are we within the law to do that, Mr. Dacopoulos?
Could you say your question again? I got lost there.
My question is, as school staff, they cannot encourage parents to opt out. Am I right in understanding that?
That's my understanding, that, that the, the expectation is that school staff will administer the test.
Correct.
The district has to create a process.
We have, yeah, we are required to create a process.
Yeah, and make it available if requested.
But we cannot encourage somebody to opt out, right?
No, can I, can I, we're, we're starting to, it seems like we're starting to, and this is, I think what was pointed out to us, what happens when we're in meetings at 9:30 at night trying to solve.
I can give you one question on executive limitations and then I do think we should just move it to a vote.
Okay.
So we, we do have, we do have accountability measures for ourselves to apply going forward under executive limitations. And last year, we didn't do S-Backs and so we weren't able to apply particular components of that. And if we choose to go with option four, then we're saying again that we're not holding ourselves accountable to those executive limitations. So then what action do we, as a board, are we going to take in, in our own accountability to holding the district accountable for particular things? Because what's identified now in our policies states that we're, we're going to be holding the district accountable based on Division 22 and these S-Backs. And I, unfortunately, it's a question that has to be addressed. We, you know, we have set standards for ourself and now we're saying, this pandemic, which is crazy, is causing us to two years in a row not have that. And, and how are we going to address that? I'd like to know that before we go ahead, go forward. Because if we don't make a plan for ourselves now, then we're never gonna do it. And then we're gonna be faced with issues in six or eight months from now.
I don't think we can address that changing those policies around executive limitation or result policy at this point in time. We have to go by the existing policies and we cannot be changing the executive policy, limitations nor results before we can take the vote. I will not be able to make that kind of show of hand vote. I will rule against that. We need to go ahead and take a vote now and decide, are we going to follow the motion as presented? Because that is not in the discussion or table today.
Hasn't been a motion.
And I just want to make a comment though, and I want to see if I'm thinking about this correctly as our legal counsel. The executive limitation is you've set limitations on me and what I can do. And in some ways, I'm coming forward with this because this one, this decision isn't within my purview to make. So that's why we're here. The second thing is on the results policy, regardless of whatever decision you make, you don't have the data on the results policy right now because these assessments, you can't compare year over year. So there's, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't help, it doesn't help you at all.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that because as Dr. Sprouls says, you would be comparing apples to oranges. So it's, whatever decision you make is useless on the results policy issue for the superintendent's evaluation.
Isn't the Division 22 one of the executive limitations? Following the Division 22 requirement, is that one of the executive limit?
Well, it's, it's part of the, I mean, it's a law, so we would.
Correct.
Your superintendent is supposed to follow all state and federal laws. So I don't, I can't remember if it's exactly, Division 22 is pointed out, but it's within all the laws she has to comply with.
Which is why I, I report to you if we have an error or in this case, I'm asking you, what option do you want? Because there's, there's some risk with any of the options, which is why we're here in the boardroom around this topic. It's exactly how the policies are supposed to work right now.
Terrific. I think it's time, I'm gonna end the discussion. Dr. LePault, a quick.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna call a motion.
Okay.
So I, I move that we approve not administering the S-Back assessments for the 2020-2021 school year.
All right, is there anybody to second?
Second.
Director Blasi, second, said Director LePault moves the motion not to approve administering S-Back assessment for 2021. Is there any discussion, quick discussion on this? No? One more discussion.
One quick, yeah. So the comment was made about, well, what if we can't test next year? We're able to test this year, but we're making a decision whether we are choosing to or not. If we absolutely can't test next year, there would be a reason for that, just like last year. And that wouldn't be a state or a Salem Kaiser School District or School Board decision. That would come from, it came from the federal government last year. So if we can't, and there's, then it would be waived like it was last year or whatever the right term is. So I don't understand why we would not be able to test last, next year if we can test this year. So I just don't see that, that risk being there, that we would be out of compliance next year because I think the feds would then say it, it's waived, so.
Thank you, thank you for explaining. Let's go around and see if we are ready to vote. Director Kylo, you want to add something?
I just want to say, I don't think it's ever right to violate the law.
Okay. That's a good way of.
Director Gos. I think it's important that we consider kids first. And considering kids and pushing them into this type of test, which is always a little stressful and more so with little ones. I, I think we're going against our own philosophy if you consider kids first.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, I have to, is there, should we, can I go ahead and vote? All right. Director Kylo, how do you vote? No. Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Gos.
Aye.
Director Hain.
No.
Director LePault Pion.
Aye.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
And I vote no. So there are three noes. Vice Chair Beth, Chandragiri, Director Kylo and Director Hain. And everybody else votes yes. So the motion passes, one, two, three, four. And so this year, we are not administering S-Back assessment for 2021 school year. All right. So we'll go to the next item, there is consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar, I move the consent calendars.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Are we ready to vote on this?
I did.
All right. So any, no, sharing no discussion. Vice Chair Bethel, the consent calendar.
Alice asked who seconded it. I answered, I did.
Okay, okay. So Director Blasi moved the motion and Vice Chair Bethel seconded it. So consent calendar. So Vice Chair Bethel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Kylo.
Aye.
Director Gos.
I accept it.
Okay. Director Hain.
Aye.
Director LePault Pion.
Aye.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
And I also vote yes, Satya Chandragiri. So it moved, it passes as unanimously, no, there's no readings. And information report, the next school board, next meeting is a work session on Tuesday, April 27th. And board report. Director Kylo, do you have any board report? Vice Chair Bethel.
Today, my freshman went back to school and she said in all capital letters, it was the most awesome day.
Oh, what a beauty.
Kids love school more than they've ever loved school before.
This is what I can tell you. My daughters have not loved school until she got to McNary. And she does love McNary and I think that's attributed to the teachers that she has there. And also her most favorite teacher, Dr. Josh Rist, received Service to Education Award a couple of weeks ago from the city of Kaiser, the community of Kaiser, and it was the most deserving award. Because he has seen my daughter this entire year through this pandemic in a way that other educators didn't take the time and I'm really grateful for him and for educators who go the extra mile. So I, I'm looking forward to kids getting back into school five days a week and I certainly hope you guys are moving the mountains to get them to do that. And I'll do whatever I can to stand behind you. Thank you.
Very good. Director Blasi, do you have it? Director Gos.
Well, I've heard lots of people say that they had their children graduating from one high school or another. I have my grandson graduating from Sprague and I'm hoping I can give him his.
Makes sense.
Very good. Advisor Mabington, tell us nice things you have done this.
Only nice things.
Oh, say something nice.
Just a second, I'll take a picture of your first in-person board meeting. Go ahead.
Well, I got to go to a football game.
Yay.
The last one. So that was fun. I get to go back to school, so that's fun.
Yay.
Yeah, everything is just fun right now, I guess.
Fantastic.
First board meeting.
Very good.
That was fun.
And late.
So you're real now. We know you're real.
Oh, yes, I'm alive, I'm here.
Yeah, Director Hain.
Yes, thank you. So I participated in early college high schools re-accreditation. It was kind of interesting. I've never done that before. I got interviewed by a lady, I can't, I don't recall her name, unfortunately. I also want to correct the record on something. There was an article in The Statesman regarding the superintendent's review and that vote. And the article quoted a director that said that four people voted against it for a particular reason. And that was not the reason I voted no. I'm not gonna say why, but that was not my reason. And that's it.
Hey, guys, I've been, been very busy. But first, just really quick, we just want to say, my sister's going back to school at North Salem in person this year, this week. So excited and she's so stoked as well, so that's awesome. And I'm just gonna try to talk really fast through these because I've been pretty busy. But first, investigation into, I, I've opened up an investigation into our, our Native American graduation rate with permission from our board chair. And what I've done so far is identify some key groups. I spoke with my tribal council, with the American Indian and Alaska Native Council that I'm a part of, our parent pack and some others. An investigation into the homeless houselessness dropout rate for houseless students, where I identified some key groups that are enthusiastic to help me in this research and to bring you guys forward a recommendation with solutions. Both of them are in stages where I just, just before the meeting, I sent an email to the district to Christie and board leadership to ask permission to work with our Indian and Department and our McKinney Vento Department. So that way I can dig a little bit deeper and find the root causes, find solutions. I'm really excited to see that, to see what comes of that. And then second, Middle Lament Valley Homeless Alliance, we received a $5.5 million ESG CB grant award, which is really cool. And this will help us with our work addressing chronic houselessness. I'm advocating with several groups in our town to fight for money to fund for programs that will help our houseless students. I serve on the, I respect and protect a leadership team with Liberty House and I've been a part of this beginning. If the board's interested, I'd love to have them come present their work to us as it may help us with addressing some of the mental health of our students right now. So if you're interested, please let me know. And then because of my strong work and advocacy for Native American students inside and outside of our schools, I was recommended by the National American Indian and Alaska Native Council's Nomination Committee. And then I was unanimously voted in, again, as the Pacific Regional Director for the American Indian and Alaska Native Council for the National School Boards Association, which is really exciting. With this role, I'm building a structure that I can bring together our tribes in 11 states that I represent, where can you get Native American voices and In-Alaska Native voices heard at the national level. And I'm learning a lot about the many nations that I represent. I'm the first in my tribe to serve in this role, the youngest ever, and the first from Oregon to serve in this role. I'm working hard that way. You know, hopefully I can get re-elected, same guy, so I keep doing that work. And then on policy, I'm currently working on a policy to introduce to you, hopefully next month. My plan was to have it this month, but it didn't work out. So I'm gonna keep you updated on that as we go. I'm just excited because I think it'll help us get better and serve kids better. Oh, with OSBA, I'm on their Board of Directors. Delighted, we had a Legislative Policy Committee meeting and there were two big legislative things that I think you guys should know about that OSBA is currently supporting. One of them was about mandatory training for board members, which should keep school board members engaged in a state of learning. More importantly, this players places higher requirements on those who seek board leadership so that we can ensure that board leadership knows how to do their job as a board member, which should help them in turn be more successful in the role of board leadership. There was a lot of debate about this throughout the state, so I would love to hear your guys' insights. And then last month, I had Jim and his team send out the official OSBA report to you guys, just because I was still learning how to figure out the email system. And I believe you all should have gotten that email. So if not, I can send it to you again. But the second is, this one's also important, but it's for a bill that's getting passed that helps, that allows local government entities to be able to make their campuses be gun-free zones, which would include concealed carries, any of the caveats like that. That one I don't know as much about, but if, should I can forward you the bill numbers? Because those are both things that would affect us. Next, the Student Steering Safety Steering Committee. We have been working to make sure that we have a stronger structure and trying to get a real sense of what the impact of this group is gonna have on the final decision. That's what a lot of our community members made very clear, they're, they're wanting to know more about. And then I think people really want to make sure that they're being truly heard by the board and it's not just gonna be something that's talked about again. And then finally, you know, I just wanted to, you know, address our students and teachers and say that that video that we heard at the beginning, I think was really inspiring. And I think it better represents our students than whatever labels that we put on them, you know, true north. I like the sound of that. So I just think we can use this opportunity to grow and I don't, I just think that we, we don't need to fix our children to fit the needs of our system, you know? We need to fix our system to fit the needs of kids. So I, I was, I was really inspired by that. So anyways, thank you, guys.
Thank you. A lot of people worked hard. I just want to start by thanking some of the communities that have been coming here for nearly 25 years, literally knocking at our door and asking for some of these very difficult questions. Superintendent Perry, Craig Spolst, Dr. Udassinata, Dr. West and others. I just want to say, you know, we have had lots of hours of behind-the-scenes discussion. Thank you for making this happen for them. What you did is, I mean, I didn't want to get mixed, missed in that thing. Finally, they waited 25 years and what you did was something very important. Because now the family can sit with us, look at the data and connect their lived experience with the data and make real differences so that our implicit biases of each one of us don't interfere in policymaking. And I really think this is a good beginning. Let's open our doors. We don't have to be a perfect organization, but at least we can be open, transparent. That's a way to become accountable and really build trust from different organizations. It was a painful journey, I'm not kidding. My blood pressure must have shot up a couple of points, but it is worth it. So thank you very much. I think you all did a good job, more than me saying what I did. I think what you did is just phenomenal. I mean, this is, I don't think we have ever had such a discussion where we were just literally opened our books and let the community see. Because ultimately, this is, these numbers are our children. It is our children, all of our children. So we have a responsibility to step up, work hand in hand and make it happen. So thank you. Good night, be well. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.